I am going to call the regular council public hearing meeting to order and move directly into adoption of minutes, please.
I'll move the minutes at April 18.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move minutes be received, CIC, April 18.
Second. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move minutes be adopted, regular council, Land use, April 18.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move minutes be adopted, regular council, April 18.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried. Now, we have two delegations this evening, and in concert with that, there are two corporate reports that I would like to ask council, with your indulgence, to bring forward. One is 098, the library strategic plan, and the other is related to delegation number two, R 100, on the Aboriginal strategy.
I'll move those recommendations forward.
Thank you. All those in favor, opposed, carried. So first up this evening, I am really happy to recognize, on behalf of council, a special award presentation we are about to make to a Surrey teen. Every year, the Federation of Canadian Municipalities offers Canadian women in government scholarship awards to young women who demonstrate exceptional leadership and strong interest in local politics. And I am proud to announce that this year, Claire McCallum, a grade 12 student at Lord Tweedsmere Secondary School in Cloverdale, is the B.C. recipient of the award. Claire, as an active member of her school's student council, won the scholarship for her research essay on how women make a difference in community service, leadership positions, and politics. So I would really happily like to call forward Claire to the stage, and council can formally recognize you for your tremendous achievement and the scholarship. Claire? Counselor. of that committee is councillor Steele. So I'm sure councillor Steele, you're happy that it was a B.C. Surrey resident that took that award this year.
I was delighted and very pleased to see you here today, and very proud of you, and very proud to take this information back to the committee at our annual general meeting, which is happening at least at the end of June. Surrey is very well-known for women in politics. We've never been shy about it, and we've actually had quite a few successful women go ahead and continue on to different levels of government. But I'm very proud to have a member of Surrey receive this award, and we wish you all luck, and hopefully, as councillor Villanue said, we may see you sitting at this table one day very soon. Thank you.
Next up is Sheldon Tetrow, who is with the Governance Consulting Tetrow, and is going to speak about the Aboriginal Leadership Committee. Sheldon?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for the introduction. My name again is Sheldon Tetrow, and I was the lead consultant on this project, the Surrey Urban Aboriginal Social Innovation Strategy, along with my colleague Michelle Guerin. I've prepared a short presentation for you tonight that talks about the project, as well as the report, I believe, that you have in front of you, which is called "All Our Relations: Phase One of the Surrey Urban Aboriginal Social Innovation Strategy." So before I begin, I would like to acknowledge that we are on the traditional territories of First Nations that have been here for thousands of years. Specifically, I mean the Twas'yn First Nation, the Semiamu First Nation, the Kwantlin First Nation, the Kukuitlam First Nation, the Ketsi First Nation, and the Kakate First Nation. In Aboriginal communities, it's very important to recognize the connection that First Nations have to particular places, and it's a deep sign of respect. And I truly appreciate that, as the forward to our report, that the mayor provided that acknowledgement and did recognize the traditional territories of those First Nations. So before I go into the report, I did just want to address a little bit of the context, specifically why the city engaged on this particular project. So many of you, I'm sure, have heard about the Truth and Reconciliation Commission, which went across Canada, hearing stories about the residential school experience and the tragic stories that they were. Over 100 years in Canada, we had a policy whereby over 150,000 Aboriginal children were placed into residential schools, away from their families, in deplorable living conditions. And to be honest, we are still living the legacy of that kind of pain and neglect in our communities. So at the end of the Truth and Reconciliation Commission's work, they put out a call to action to all Canadians, including local governments, to work with Aboriginal people on a path towards reconciliation of that horrible legacy. And so the report that we have undertaken here is Surrey's direct response to that call to action. And I'm very proud to say that with this report, Surrey is definitely in the forefront of the reconciliation work that's going on in communities across Canada. When the project started, the city quickly realized, of course, that it could not work alone on a project of reconciliation with Aboriginal peoples. And so they convened an Aboriginal leadership committee. Many of them are in this photo. There's even some of them are here with us tonight. And they were a part of providing guidance to the overall research of the project, as well as helping to interpret and validate the findings. So we had invited all of the First Nations to participate. So, for example, Semiamu and Kukuitlam were very consistent participants in the project. We also invited all of the major Aboriginal organizations in Surrey, including Kikino Housing Society, the Fraser Region Aboriginal Friendship Centre, Quinjatelle Support House, and Hockmeath Child and Family Services. We also invited some major non-Aboriginal organizations that have a very close connection to the Aboriginal community, in particular, the Surrey School District and Fraser Region Health. So the leadership committee gave us great guidance, and they also helped us to engage directly with the Aboriginal community in Surrey. So we were able to do focus groups with Aboriginal residents who live here, as well as key informant interviews with many service providers and frontline workers. And out of all of that work, we were able to generate 14 key findings. So the 14 key findings are really the central plank of this entire report, the phase one. I've got three slides with the findings on them, and I can't, unfortunately, in the time period, go through all of them, but I will highlight some things for you to consider. So, for example, if you look at finding number two, it says that it's estimated the current size of the Aboriginal population in Surrey has surpassed the Aboriginal population in Vancouver and will grow exponentially over the next 15 years. Currently, the Aboriginal population in Surrey is 13,000. And there's a kind of persistent belief that Vancouver has the largest Aboriginal population in Metro Vancouver, but it's actually Surrey now holds that honor. And our projections are that in 15 years, the population will be near 50,000 Aboriginal individuals living in Surrey. This is a huge, fast-growing population, and it's outpacing the city of Surrey's overall growth rate, and certainly outpaces the growth rate in the city of Vancouver. The other thing that we know about the population is that it's extremely young. So half of those individuals are under the age of 26 years old. You can compare that to the median age of Metro Vancouver residents who are above 40 years old. So the population is very young. And so what we did is, the finding is basically a statement of fact like that, and then there are conclusions which lead to the implications of those findings. So in this instance, for example, you can say that one of the implications is that there needs to be a wake-up call from other levels of government and funders to recognize the size of the population that exists in Surrey and to allocate sufficient resources to meet the needs of that growing population. So for all of these findings in the report, you'll find similar kinds of conclusions and implications for lawmakers, for policymakers, and for funders. Here, I would like to draw your attention to finding number nine. So it reads, "The majority of Aboriginal people that move to Surrey stay in the city. Homeownership levels among Aboriginal households in Surrey are much higher than in Vancouver, and more Aboriginal-specific housing options are needed for renters and for the homeless." So we like to call this one of our myth-busting findings. Again, there's a persistent belief that Aboriginal people in Surrey are transient, that they don't choose to live here, to set down roots, and to make investments in the city, and to become part of the community fabric that's here. And our research told us that that is absolutely not true. The majority of Aboriginal people in Surrey are long-term residents, and in fact, nearly 50% of households are homeowners. Having said that, we do recognize that there are specific challenges for different segments of the Aboriginal population in Surrey. So like the statement reads, "For homeless, Aboriginal homeless people, there are not services that are targeted directly to them, that are delivered in a culturally appropriate manner. Similarly, young families have a very difficult time finding appropriate housing accommodation, rental accommodations." So there's areas that can be addressed yet for improvements. On the last slide with the findings, I'll just do a quick one, finding number 12, which reads, "There's a need to augment existing services for Aboriginal people." So this is fairly obvious, given the population kind of statistics that I spoke about earlier. So the growth in population means that there needs to be increased funding and resources provided to this sector of the population. But we also identified in our research specific gaps in terms of programming for this community. So, for example, there isn't appropriate residential addictions treatment facilities. There's a whole range of youth services that are not age-appropriate for this part of the community. And there need to be way more supports for children, Aboriginal children, who are living in poverty. So we have an opportunity to close those gaps and also to prepare for that kind of growth in the population over the coming years. So those are the key findings. I do hope you had a chance to read them all, and I hope you will read the report as well. There's a lot of things I think that would be interesting to you, and it certainly cast a light on the Aboriginal community in Surrey, and the diversity, and the kind of dynamism of the community, and the fact that the community is a central kind of part of the fabric of community life here in Surrey.
Thank you, and thank you for the work that you have done in bringing this report through to us tonight. I'm looking forward to advancing the gaps that you have identified through the iteration and through the work of the Social Planning Committee. I'm going to put the report on the table for council to receive, and move the report. Councillor Lefranque?
My medical.
Would you? Yes. There you go. Your councillor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you so much, Sheldon. I really appreciate you making your presentation today. It was such an honor for me to work with the leadership committee and with yourself and Michelle on this amazing project. And I also want to thank Aileen Murphy and Kristin Patton, who are in the audience today, for the outstanding work that they've done on this project. I'd also like to make sure that we acknowledge Jacobo Miro. And I'm just wondering where people can find this report. It is now made public, as we release it to the community.
It'll be online.
It will be on our city website, I understand. And so that report is available to people if they would like to access it. I think this is important for setting the tone and the first steps towards ensuring that the Aboriginal people in our community are well-served. And I think that one of the most important findings that we found was, even though we have a similar-sized population, Vancouver has some 28 service organizations servicing their population, whereas Surrey has about four or five. And I see Joanne Mills in the audience, and I know that all of the Aboriginal organizations here do amazing work, but they really are underfunded, and we'd like to see that redressed. Over the next year, we really do hope to work with the leadership committee and really dig down and create some of those policy tables and do some of the work that is required to advance Aboriginal needs in our community. I'm really looking forward to it. I hope that the community is as well. It's a piece of work that I'm very, very proud of, and I welcome the business community and social service communities to take a look at that report and see how we can all work together to make sure that every single individual in our community has an opportunity to succeed. And given that we have such a young population of Aboriginal kids, I had the opportunity to go to a school where they had a dinner with 1,000 children of Aboriginal descent. And it's an amazing, diverse, and very active community, and I hope that we can make sure that they have every opportunity to succeed. I also want to make a comment that the name of the report is "All Our Relations," and I think that that's a really important tone to set with this particular report, as it really refers to, you know, all of us and all of our relationships. And so I thank June Later for, longtime, long-serving Aboriginal community member, for coming up with that title. It's a great title, and I think it really encapsulates the way that we want to work with our Aboriginal community and our First Nations in our city. So thank you so much.
Thank you, councillor, and thank you for all the good work you did in bringing it up forward to us tonight. Councillor Villanue?
Thank you very much. I wanted to acknowledge Aileen Murphy, who, when she saw funding available for beginning the strategy, jumped on that right away and worked hard putting an application together. And for Vera Lefranque's really dedication to this issue and determination to ensure that Surrey got the facts and would play a leadership role in this area because of our respect for the Aboriginal community, whose land we all live on. So I want to tell you how much I appreciate the format of the report and how clear it is presented to the public, and how, as a social policy committee, we're looking forward to moving forward those recommendations. And I know the mayor and council are 100% behind that. And to thank all the members of the community that participated and are now becoming our partners, so we can help make sure that everyone has an inclusive and sustainable future in Surrey. So thank you very much for that.
I'm going to call the question. All those in favor, opposed, and that's carried. Thank you very much, sir. And now moving on to R 098, on the library's strategic vision. I'll call, look for a mover.
I'll move.
A seconder?
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, and that is carried. And thank you. Freeze you up to leave tonight. I'm going to move into the public hearing portion of the evening. Madam Clerk, if I could have you read Public Hearing Bylaw Number One.
Number one is zoning amendment by law 18703. The address is 9388 125th Street. The applicant is Orbit Holding Limited, Jagjit Sikhan Sequinder, and Parthap Singh. The applicant is seeking to rezone the property from single-family residential to single-family residential 12. Applicants proposing to subdivide into three single-family small lots with front-access-side-by-side double-car garages. In addition, a development variance permit is being sought to reduce the minimum width for the front-access-side-by-side double-car garage from 13.4 meters to 12.8 meters for all the proposed lots.
There has no one signed up to speak to this bylaw. We do have a couple of pieces of correspondence, two pieces of correspondence on table. Is there anyone wishing to speak to bylaw number one? First call, second call, third and final call. Madam Clerk, would you read bylaw number two?
He's zoning amendment by law 18715. The address is 10450 127th Street and a portion of 10460 127th Street. The applicants are Armajeet and Sharonjeet Johal and Gurdev Batar. The applicant is, are seeking to rezone a portion of the site from single-family residential to single-family residential 12. The applicant is proposing to consolidate the site with the adjacent property at 10470 127th Street in order to subdivide into 11 single-family lots.
I have two pieces of correspondence on table with concerns on the congestion and the roadway width, as well as one person signed up to speak. Is there a Lisa Wainwright to come forward? Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you. Myself, I happen to live at the end of that cul-de-sac, and I-
Can we just have a little bit different view here, so get a better sense of where the speakers?
Sorry?
Okay. You're at the end of the cul-de-sac?
Yes.
Thank you.
So when I was looking at these plans, there was, it looked like a road coming behind, so those 11 homes would be exiting out right in front of that little area. One of the neighbors just renovated his driveway, and there was people parked on both sides of that 104A street, and it was barely able to pass a single car between those. That area in there has multiple large homes that have multiple suites in them, and there's, some of them don't have enough parking already. They throw a party, and there's almost no way to get through the streets around there. Wonderful and festive, but it's not really built for the amount of congestion that they're talking about having there. So my concern is property values for those people living in that area, as well as traffic. There is another street that goes the opposite direction and then comes out onto 128. If they were planning to join up with that street and build that way, it would make more sense perhaps than trying to-
Do we just have a layout? Maybe I'll get a layout up there of what the transportation? Okay, does that help anybody? So, I'm sorry, I don't think that helps. Well, it could be me, but it certainly didn't help me. Did anybody else understand that? Okay. So that access and egress and the layout of the... Perhaps staff could explain the transportation expectations here.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
As part of the development application, there will be road widening along 127th Street, which is along the west side of the development, as well as road widening along 104A Avenue, along the south side. There will also be a new road to be constructed along the 127A Street, along the east side of the development. With future development in the area, we'll see a connection to this new 105 Avenue, a couple of properties to the north, at which point there's the possibility of providing alternate access out to 128 Street on the east side.
Okay. Does that help you at all? Well, that makes me a little bit more comfortable, but I think I would be even more comfortable if they just were not coming out onto 104A. They were just being directed the other way, because there's so much existing housing already flowing that way, and it seems to have no problem with the way that they've built it.
It's a half-road now, 104A, Mr. Engineer?
Madam Mayor, it is a full road, but there will be roadworks along the north side of 104A.
Widening it and putting sidewalks?
Widening with sidewalks and streetlights.
As long as the homes that are being built in there have adequate parking themselves, because it seems that a lot of the suites will have two vehicles, and then you'll have two or three suites, and some of them all having two vehicles, and then you have the main suite, those guys happen to have four vehicles. It's amazing, but I know we're trying to do an easy-walking route area, but the parking just, it doesn't end up being there. The streets end up being stacked, and then there's no access.
Okay. I have a question from councillor Gill.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My question's to engineering staff. Just want to actually reconfirm on 104th A Avenue, what is that ultimate width in terms of our current standard, and does that permit parking on both sides of the street?
Madam Mayor, 104A Avenue will have an ultimate width of 8.5 meters, which will allow parking on both sides.
No, that's all for me to speak to this matter at this time.
Okay. Thank you very much for your comments tonight. Is there anyone else wishing to speak to bylaw number two?
I have one.
Okay, sir?
Yeah, I have one question.
Name and address, please, for the clerk.
On this one, it's not showing it.
Could I, could we please get your name and address for the clerk?
My name is Narhari Zoshi. I live on 104, 127th Street.
Yes.
10439 127th Street. The three lots they are dividing it, you're not showing it properly here, but as the lady mentioned there before, it's on 104th Avenue, there is six, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, seven lots you are adding. Why don't you do the, those three lot, make a subdivision in between, which will be very similar to 105A Avenue and 128 Street? There is also similar, so that way you won't have too much traffic on 104A Avenue. Because, she's right, there are too many cars on, because seven lots coming into, from one lot, one and a half lot. You can make, out of those three lots, still make 11 lots or 12 lots, whatever you want, but you can make this like a cul-de-sac, and then make the all lots even size, so there won't be two small lots. I mean, there are, right now, it's showing the four lots quite big, and then, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, seven lots very small. So if you make all those 11 lots similar, it will reduce that parking problem also, and then traffic on 104A Avenue.
Okay. Thank you very much for your comments, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak to this bylaw? Do we have any other speakers after this gentleman? One more? Your name, please, sir, and your address for the clerk.
My name's Carl Johnson. I live at 1049 127th Street, and we also own 10500 127th Street. On the map, you're shown with access for a 105 doesn't exist, and it can't exist, going to 128, as you have allowed a brand-new house to be built, where you show a road, unless you're going to bulldoze, bulldoze down a brand-new house. And the property, the road shows going through our property, and we have no intention- And the property, the road shows going through our property, and we have no intention of allowing that road.
Get some clarification from the engineer on the traffic plans there? I'm assuming it has to do with the half-road.
Madam Mayor, the concept plan that we have for this area will certainly be dependent on development taking place in this area in order to realize this road network that we have on the screen.
So, what is before council this evening? What is this dependent on?
It's dependent on the developer constructing the three frontages, the road frontages along the development site, which will provide access to 127th Street, and the traffic will circulate around the neighborhood.
And, sir, what was your comment relative to 127?
Well, where you show the road 105A Avenue, it can't go through to 128th Street, as a brand-new house has been built there. And on the opposite, on the left, I own the two lots, me and my wife and I, and we have no intention of allowing that road. We've lived there for 40 years, and we don't think it should just take over.
Okay, but that is not... The application before council this evening does not require the 105? That's a future dedication and obviously a long way in the future? Is that correct, Mr. Engineer?
Madam Mayor, realizing 105 Avenue itself will be development-driven.
Yes, so it won't be anytime soon if you're not interested in developing it, sir. But it doesn't preclude this application in front of us this evening? That will go 104 and...
That's correct, Madam Mayor.
Okay. And thank you, sir, for your comments. Do you have more to add?
Then there will be no access that way.
There won't be? That's right. Thank you. Is there... I had another speaker.
Hi, my name is Crystal Dixon, and I live at 1049 127th Street. And I agree with what Lisa has to say, that road 104A, there's not even... There is not even a line on the road. It's really small and really narrow, and I don't really understand how they're going to pack, what is it, seven houses on one lot? And then, we live in a really quiet residential area with that much congestion, there's going to be a lot more traffic. We have, you know, a lot of us have pets and animals, and as you can see in the other... On the other slide, that it's a lot of... There's a lot of trade, it's a lot of trade areas, and that's, you know, there's animals and lives and all that kind of stuff, sorry. But that's all going to be gone, so that... And there's a lot of the neighbors that are against that, and obviously, they're not here tonight, but I just don't understand. I can see how they can put four houses on one lot, but seven? It's just going to be crazy with the amount of traffic and congestion and people, especially if they put extra suites in there. It's a very quiet street, so it doesn't really fit with the neighborhood, and I just still, like I hear Lisa say, it's going to be crazy. People have parties now, and the street is like, you can't get back and forth. It's a very quiet street, so I don't know how that's going to work when they have, you know, two or three or four cars per house. And that's about it. That's all I have to say.
I have, sir, just one question from Counselor Gill.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Actually, my question is to planning staff. Just want to kind of confirm, when was the southwest Westminster Heights infill area concept plan finalized that would have showed the proposed road networks that the current application is working within?
It was July 22, 2013.
And did we have a public process in terms of this particular concept plan?
Yes, we would have, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor, and thank you very much for your comments. Final call unless there's... Do I have another speaker? Okay. You, sir, will be the final speaker.
My name is George, and I live at 973 140th Street.
Could you just lower the mic a little bit so we could hear you better, sir?
My name is George, and I live at 973 140th Street. Okay, it is a problem. You say there is a bioenergy facility that need a... This bydo change that is at 9900 140th Street.
That's next application.
Next application.
What's that?
That's the next bylaw, that's not this one.
Oh, yeah, next bylaw?
Next one, yes.
Okay, then I would ask...
Thank you. Okay, moving on, Madam Clerk, to bylaw number three.
Official Community Plan Text Amendment Bylaw 18716, and Official Community Plan Amendment Bylaw 18717, zoning amendment by law 18718. The address is 9900 140th Street and 14150 Green Timbers Way. The applicant is the city of Surrey, and the purpose is to amend the official community plan by law in order to permit a higher density of floor area ratio for the subject sites at 9900 140th Street and 14150 Green Timbers Way. The applicant is seeking to redesignate the site from mixed employment to multiple residential and rezone the site from one-acre residential to comprehensive development. The applicant's proposing to accommodate future institutional residential office and civic uses, including a care facility, emergency shelter, transitional housing offices in a bioenergy facility.
Since this is a civic application, I would ask someone to speak to this in terms of a bit of a presentation for the many uses here. I have currently eight people signed up not wishing to speak who are against, several pieces of correspondence council has received that are either opposed or expressing concern, and six people signed up to speak. I wonder who's going to do that quick overview for us first, because there's quite a few people, I think, in the audience and at home that are interested in this application.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Just to give a little bit of background and context of the application, so the subject site involves two properties right at the northeast corner of Green Timbers Way and 140th Street. The proposal includes an official community plan amendment to redesignate the site from mixed employment to multiple residential, and a text amendment to allow a density of 2.5 FAR. The proposal also includes a rezoning from one-acre residential to a comprehensive development zone, and a general development permit to permit a variety of uses, including institutional, residential, office, the emergency shelter, transitional housing, and bioenergy facility.
Hello? Hey, can I speak now?
No. No, not yet, sir.
Oh, okay, yeah. Okay.
So in terms of the site context, obviously, Green Timbers Park is located to the north. The RCMPE Division is located immediately east of the site. Green Timbers Way and the Jim Patterson Outpatient Clinic is located to the south, and to the west across 140th Street is multiple residential development in the city center plan. In terms of sort of the ownership history of the site, so the site was previously owned by the province. It's approximately five hectares in size. In comparison, Green Timbers Urban Forest, which surrounds the site to the north, is 183 hectares in size, excuse me, and includes second-growth forests, wetlands, lakes, grasslands, and a variety of nature trails. In 2013, the province was contemplating putting the site up for sale to the general market at large. However, in 2014, the province instead elected to complete a direct sale to the city as part of their provincial government real estate release of assets for economic generation program, and the city has owned that site since the... The two properties since that time. In terms of the proposed uses under the CD zone, it really is a combination of uses in sort of a campus-type development, so it includes multiple residential development, care facilities, community services, which would accommodate the low-barrier shelter and transitional housing, office uses, parking facilities, the bioenergy facility, and some accessory uses, including eating establishments, et cetera. Along with the rezoning is a general development permit, and this is a very sort of general permit that would set sort of the framework and some guidelines for the site, but subsequent detailed development permits would be required should council support the rezoning. The general development permit does identify some of the key considerations on the site. So of course, Green Timbers Park to the north and northeast, and the interface with that park, the riparian area on the eastern portion of the site for Quibble Creek, and a mature grove of trees on the northeast corner of Green Timbers Way and 140th Street. So in terms of the general development permit, there's a very sort of conceptual site plan included, and again, it outlines key parameters on the site. So some of those key parameters is an edge buffer along the portions of the site that interface with Green Timbers Park, and that would be approximately 10 meters in width. It does identify the mature grove of trees on the southwest corner of the site, right at the intersection there. Of course, the riparian area for Quibble Creek, and some heritage maples that are located along Green Timbers Way on the north side of that road. The general development permit also includes some general parameters in terms of connectivity, interface, general form and character of the development, but doesn't get into specifics of the development at this time. So in terms of next steps, should this rezoning be approved, subsequent detailed development permits would be required for each phase of the development. And through that process, that's when the detailed design would be brought forward and reviewed, and ultimately presented for council's consideration. As part of that detailed development permit process, a more detailed arborist report would be prepared to identify the mature trees that are on the site in more detail, as well, an environmental professional would be required to be retained to determine the appropriate setbacks from Quibble Creek. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, and Mr. Croy, did you want to speak to the Green Timbers generally, and then we can get into hearing from the public?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A little history lesson, as you remember, over seven years prior to 1930, the King and Ferris...
I don't remember. I really don't remember.
We're reminded of our history lesson.
Oh.
The King and Ferris Company logged the site over seven years prior to 1929. We know it's a one-square-mile area, and BC Forest Service then started replanting. It was the birth of forestry and reforestation in the province. In 1970, the District of Surrey acquired 400 acres in trade with the province, generally in the area of Green Timbers. In the 1987, Surrey for recreational facility development did some logging in the middle of the site, and following that in 1988, there was a referendum, and the people were asked if they wanted to have much of the site set aside in perpetuity for its intrinsic urban forest values. It passed overwhelmingly with about 95% in favor, and following that, council dedicated by bylaw an urban forest of about 425 acres. Then, again in 1996, council added 53 acres north of 100th Avenue to the headwaters of King Creek, again through referendum and again through a dedication by law. Then in 2008, the remaining 77 acres, or 77 acres, was given to the city as a free-crown grant by the province of British Columbia on the understanding that it would be set aside as Green Timbers Park. So we must draw a distinction between the park, given as a free-crown grant from the province, and the other portion of the dedicated urban forest, which came in 1996 and 1988.
Thank you. I thought that was important to clarify, so I appreciate that. Now, if we could have Don Schutz is the first speaker on my list here. Don?
Good evening. Thanks, Madam Mayor, counsel. I'm arguing against this rezoning because I think it would better serve... I'm getting... I'm kind of nervous, sorry about that. I'm arguing against the rezoning because actually, I think it would better serve the people of Surrey for these two properties to actually be made part of Green Timbers Park. It's difficult to argue... It's difficult to argue against care facilities, transitional housing, and the other uses that are being mentioned here. They're necessary causes, and if it was any other space, I'd be embarrassed to even question it. But Green Timbers is special, it's unique, and it is threatened. So I'd like to reframe the question from, isn't this a great space for these health uses, to, is this the best use of this space for the long term? My understanding, just by reading the big thick brief that you guys have, is that there are already several different properties that were earmarked for the transitional housing, some of them going back to 2014, if I read it correctly. Properties were rezoned, and then these two green property... Green Timbers properties became available. And it's easy to see, just by driving or walking through there, why anybody would jump at the chance to use this space instead. After all, it's nestled next to a park, there's a creek nearby, there are mature stands of trees, anybody would love to relocate here. And I can also see where this could be an incredible showcase development, especially in partnership with the province, which I think is part of the deal with the transitional housing. That said, it does strike me as a little bit of an irony that one of the proposed uses of the land is for a bioenergy facility, to clear forested land for a green industry. I realize that was just a proposed use, it wasn't... There's no plans... Well, I'm not aware of that there are plans for that yet. But while it appears that the transitional housing, at least, that project has some options, and those other properties that are already rezoned even, Green Timbers does not have those options. It can't be picked up and moved to another part of Surrey. It can't be reconceptualized and developed somewhere else. This is it. Once this area is cleared, once it's dug over, the developed parts can never... They can never be brought back to what they are now. The two sites under discussion here contain not just... Not just the forested areas, the second-growth forests, but there are parts that once had the old, I think it was the Sea Cadets building on it, and those have been removed, and I think this gives us a unique opportunity as a city. It gives us a unique opportunity to not only preserve those bits of second-growth forest and the heritage trees that exist, but also to enhance the entire Green Timbers site, the whole, not just this little area that we're seeing here, but that whole area going down to 92nd Avenue across 148th. It would be great as a whole for the recreational resource for all the citizens of Surrey, both now and decades, well, hopefully forever into the future. And so keeping this area, the whole area, as a park, does a few things. It protects this tiny little dog leg of the urban forest that's at the northwest corner, 100th and 140th Street. It protects it from further fractured isolation, and that's environmentally, that's a good thing. It gives an opportunity for more access points into the park, and that's good for people. And it also gives, I think, a safer environment for access to the Avenue of Heritage Trees on Green Timbers Way. These are trees that were originally planted when they were trying to figure out what trees they could plant in BC. There's a historical arboretum in that area. And I think this is a better opportunity for nature programs to take advantage of that. The Surrey Nature Center is just on the other side of the street there, and that's good for heritage and for education. for heritage and for education. Partially cleared area where the cadets buildings were gives an opportunity for play and recreation areas for children and residents, the various apartments, townhouses, and houses in that area. Within a few blocks of this site are two subsidized housing complexes, there's the options right across the street at 140th, and then there's the, Mutual Vancouver has a certain place on 101 Avenue. Both of these are filled with young families, I live right in that area, both of them are filled with young families, young families filled with kids that eat places to picnic and to play. And with increased density and population growth in the coming years, there's a need for this sort of space, and Green Timbers, already there, is well situated to provide it. It can be a showcase for the city for multi-use recreation, play, and green space, a space that could lead visitors either into nature, into the forest, and also across the street to the Surrey Nature Centre for programs, activities, et cetera. Green Timbers is right at the edge of downtown Surrey. Here is a perfect opportunity to provide an entry point into the park that could be Surrey's showcase. This could become Surrey Stanley Park, or Surrey Central Park, or Surrey's Wascona Park. Wascona Park is the big park in Regina, if you've never been. There are environmental advantages, too, in keeping this area as a park. Remember at one point, this whole square mile was supposed to remain forest in perpetuity, that was the province that was supposed to do that. And here's an opportunity for Surrey to show off its green cred, and make up for some of the other various incursions into Green Timbers over the years, none from this council, let me hasten to add, the school district at 92nd Avenue and 140th, Simon Cunningham just a little north of that, the Jim Patterson outpatient center at Fraser Highway, the RCMP headquarters on Green Timbers Way, all of these are valuable institutions, but they were all chipped out, was originally supposed to remain forest. I'm not an expert on the city's property acquisition budget and how these sorts of decisions are made. One email to me when I was asking about it said that the land was not bought with park funds, and the implication seemed to be that it therefore had to be used for something else, and I really don't understand that, and I hope it's not true. And so what I, what I'm really asking is to put this process on hold for a moment. Can we not step back and, at least for a couple of weeks or months, and look at the big picture, look at Green Timbers as a whole? How does it fit into a rapidly developing central Surrey area? What is the vision for this whole park? Right now, Green Timbers, the forest, the park, falls just outside the downtown community plan, and to me, that seems a little bit unfortunate, because it's right here, it's just a few minutes' walk, right from where we're sitting right now, well, 10-minute walk, 15, a few. Actually, it's uphill, so it could be 20, 25 minutes. A few years ago, just before the city hall was built, the architect, or one of the architects, gave a presentation at the new city central library. And one of his points in explaining the advantages of using this location for a city hall was just how close Green Timbers was to the downtown core. He saw this proximity to this vast green, or this green spaces as a real asset. There's no town-centered community plan for Green Timbers. It sits between town centers. It's an area we pass through on our way to Guilford, to Fleetwood, or Clayton, or other points, south and east. Really, it's, it's a gateway to almost the rest of Surrey. I'm concerned when I see these kinds of rezoning developments here in what most people see as a park, I'm concerned that despite the best intentions of everyone, parks, engineering, social planning, despite everyone's best efforts in their own individual disciplines to mitigate harm, mitigate against harm, despite everyone's best intentions and careful planning, this incredible jewel right on the edge of downtown, this historically significant clump of land, of forest and green area, will eventually be whittled away into isolated fragments of bush with a few sad trees, inviolable for wildlife, inaccessible as a whole to the public, and as a result, peripheral to the consciousness of the people of Surrey. So that's why I'm asking, why can't we put this rezoning on hold and make a larger plan? Can we not make something bigger than just these few acres that are under discussion here? Can we not recognize that really, they are part of Green Timbers and not isolated properties to be developed in some other way? I could be wrong. Maybe these properties are not valuable as a natural area. Maybe a biofuel facility is better than a forest. But if we must, if we absolutely must continue to encroach on this area, parts of which, to the best of my knowledge, have never been tilled, never been built on, and have not been modified by humans since they were logged 90-some-odd years ago, and before that, never. If we must build here, let's do it with careful thought after input from as many people as possible, so that we're doing this with our eyes wide open, fully aware of how we are shaping this landscape for the future. So please, let's not rush through to try and get something built there. In fact, I have a little fun little exercise for you, and that is to stand at 140th Street and 100th Avenue, on the southeast corner, and face south. To your left is Green Timbers Park. Now, walk south. On your left-hand side is Green Timbers Park. Somewhere, before you reach Green Timbers Way, the park ends and the property under discussion begins. But, but where? Can you tell, just by looking? I can't. Perhaps a trained surveyor can see marks in the woods or something, but to most people, this whole area is already a park. And if we looked at the overhead, you'll notice that without any of the zoning stuff on it, it's just green. We should always be mindful of the errors or predecessors made in allowing this area to be logged, and the realization that they knew it was wrong, even at the time. In 20, 30, 100 years, what will the people who follow us think about rezoning decisions here? Will they be applauding the foresight that we had to cut into undeveloped forested areas for fuel facilities and housing? Or will they shake their heads at us, just as we shake our heads at those who originally allowed this area to be logged 90 years ago? Thanks for listening.
Thank you for your comment.[1021.19][1021.19](applause) Randy Overall. Mr. Overall? I'm sorry, maybe didn't hear me. Randy Overall?
Just to let you know that I do live, or we do live on 140th Street, 9865 140th, one of condos there, and we've been there for approximately 20 years. We've seen the area grow, and with the Green Timbers, we've noticed the park is going a little bit. When we moved in, there was one lane of traffic going each way, with parking on both sides of the street. Now there's two lanes going each way, and the speed limit, I believe, is supposed to be 50 kilometers. That's crawling, according to some of the traffic that goes up and down that street on 140th. That's going to increase a lot more traffic, I don't know where the entrance or the exit is going to be. And when we come out of our parcade, it's Chinese people come out of our parcade and see greenery in front of us, instead of buildings. From 100th to Fraser Highway, I personally, not witnessed, but I've seen the aftermath, at least three accidents, one at 100th and 140th, that probably caused injury, one at 140th, and approximately 9800 block in front of our place, car was rearing itself over, and then down on Green Timbers, was broadside by another vehicle, and it landed in somebody's yard. And that's only if the speed limits have been 50 kilometers, and the amount of traffic that even the, even the commercial vehicles now are, doubled or tripled since we've been in there. The gentleman that was in front of us, in front of myself, basically said everything I wanted to say. The Green Timbers Park, we don't know exactly where it started and where it finishes. I don't know, like, like you said, we don't know, survey about it. That area was parkland. And seeing more development come up that way is, to me personally, not right. We have to have some greenery and nursery, still buildings. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your comments, sir. Angela Walker. Angela?
Hi. I don't live around there, but I work at the Jimmy Patterson facility, so I get to have a window that looks out right over that property. And I've walked through it, and there's eagles that cruise over top of that property that looks like nothing but green bush and parking lots, but if you walk through there, there's birds that chirp, and I saw a bald eagle the other day, and golden hawks, and I think that that whole green space should be kept as park with the original Green Timbers area the way it was intended to be from the past. There's big history there. People really appreciate that park, a lot of families use it. All the multiple housing and that on the other side in the city center area, this is a perfect balance to have a nice, big, beautiful park there, kept intact, for people to have that piece of nature.
Okay, but just to be sure, you're understanding this is not part of Green Timbers Park?
Well, whatever it is-
I understand what you're saying, but-
I can still say what I think it should be.
I just don't want you to believe that this is parkland, it is not parkland.
But can I not say what I think it should be?
Yeah, if you think it should be park, absolutely.
Or maybe you should think it could be, and the reasons why? Because what it's surrounded by, which is already back from history, from when it was logged, and all the big trees, and the fact that it is just this little precious jewel of a green space that's so close to all the other, you know, high-density within the city center. And it is outside the line of where the official community plan is for the city center, it's in another, it's close to it, but it's outside of it, so that would make it the perfect spot, like the number-one speaker talking. It's very special, and I think that you're moving in the wrong direction to, to do that development like that there. Because you can't ever replace that, it'll be another piece taken. And I remember where, where I work, what it used to look like there, when I took my kids for field trips to the, the Green Timbers, the old buildings that were there, and the big trees, and-
You mean prior to the hospital, Jimmy Patterson?
I worked there.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. It's a nice facility, but I remember what was there before, too. It's sad. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comment. Next up, I have Mr. Kirk Fisher.
Good evening, everyone. Kirk Fisher, 3866 Devonshire Drive, Surrey, B.C. Our group has resided in the city of Surrey for 44 years. We have our head office within a kilometer or two of this facility, proposed facility. We also own and operate a care facility in Surrey. We support this location and this bylaw, and we have 95 letters of support from medical and business professionals and their staff for this location. Just wanted to, we could pass those on.
All those in favor, pose, and that's carried. Could you pass it to the clerk? Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Matthew Alexander.
Good evening, hello, members of council. My name is Matthew Alexander, I live at 17108 8th Avenue in Surrey, and I work in the Surrey area, and I raise my daughter in the Surrey area. And we're familiar with the Green Timbers Way and Green Timbers Park, and the Surrey Nature Centre, over the course of spring break, have been working nearby, was able to enroll my daughter at the Surrey Nature Centre for the eco camp, and they got to go to the Surrey Nature Park, and go to the lake, and go fishing. And I appreciate what the city showed us earlier about the potential for this site, and what they, how the city of Surrey and the province have protected the site over the years. And I think that the plan that was shown here tonight continues to protect that park, and I appreciate that it's currently, what's before the council tonight is a rezoning application to go from what is already residential to higher residential. So we're not going from parkland to residential. And I just want to say that as somebody who gets to use the area and has children who use the area, that this is going to enhance it alongside the Surrey RCMP E Division and the Jim Patterson outpatient care facility, and I think it's a good plan.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. Jim Fokes.
My name is Jim Fokes, I live at 19135 74th Avenue in Clayton, and I'm also director for Green Timbers Heritage Society, and basically, our sole reason for being is to try to preserve your park from this slow whittling away of areas of it.[1546.65][1546.65](applause) I have here your own paper that's in front of you for land use agendas, and every development various permit has this section in it, it says, "submission of a finalized tree survey and a statement regarding tree preservation to the satisfaction of a city landscape architect." I think I'm here tonight to say that we should preserve the trees to the satisfaction of the people of Surrey. Could I ask staff, could I ask staff to please put the Cosmo's view of this on the screen? Now, contrary to what the legalities or Surrey Realty Services may think, if I look at that portion of the, of the planned land, if that's not tree area, it may not be designated as a park, it may not be legalized as a park, but in 1930, the province of B.C. said it would stay as a forest in perpetuity. I'm rather dumbfounded that when a piece of land suddenly comes up that the province has been holding for some 90 years as tree area, Realty Services jumps on the chance to turn it into a residential development, when a referendum had most of the people of Surrey voting that they want to have a park, not necessarily a legal park in your definition, as the Land Titles Office might say, but the square mile that they see as a park every day they drive by it. I think the wise people-
Are you going back to when we did the referendum to keep in perpetuity Green Timbers Park, Mr. Fokes?
I'm going back to what the province of B.C. said in 1930. And many, many threats have come towards Green Timbers in the meantime, and by the various people who formed the Green Timbers Heritage Society, and the wisdom of previous councils, we have managed to set aside parts of the original, set aside, and what's left is now, seems to be up for grabs. I would say that Mr. Schutze's talked to you and his plea, that you take time to think of what is going to be lost, and you can't get it back. I thank you very much.
Good call, mate. Thank you, sir.[1734.41][1734.41](applause) That concludes the speaking that I have on this agenda for this evening. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak? I see hands waving.
Your turn, yes. Good evening. Give your name to the clerk, please.
My name is George, and I live at 19763 140th Street. I have a concern regarding this bioenergy facility. In such a busy place, why this bioenergy facility is-
Bioenergy, it's a clean, clean energy system that may or may not happen on the site, but that is before us this evening as being a permissible use on the site if this zoning goes through.
Okay, that may not happen.
It would... But it is allowed on the site if the zoning is successful?
It is... Is it as per law? Is it allowed, or do you need any bylaw change for that? Do you need any bylaw change for bioenergy facility?
Cleaning...
Yeah.
Development... Through a development permit?
I am asking question. For this bioenergy facility to make this facility there, do you need any bylaw change?
Do I need any bylaw change?
Yeah, that is one question.
No, there would be no bylaw change needed that I know of, other than the rezoning process this evening. Am I correct in that, Mr. Engineer, Mr. Planner?
Madam Mayor, there'd be a development permit would be required, and the facility would obviously have to meet the Metro Vancouver air quality regulations and other regulations of such.
You're near to that.
Development permit process would need to be required, that's it.
Okay, that's it.
Yes. Does that help you? Okay. Okay, I think Deb, you're next. And then I'll take another call, because I think there's several others.
Good evening.
Good evening. Deb Jacks, Surrey Environmental Partners. My letter would have been longer to council, had I not had a computer that is frequently being threatened by Windows 10, and it cuts the entire machine off. I'm dead serious about it, so I had to whip through on this, because it told me I only had a few minutes left.
Did you send us a letter, or you just...
I did, indeed. And what I'm going to say right now is a supplement.
Supplement to it, okay.
I want, first of all, to thank very much Jeff Peng and Pat Lau for having responded in writing to the letter that I presented or provided to the Land Use Committee. Now, with regards to some of the comments made in there, the Heritage Society has been consulted with regards to the road situations, but I'm not confident that the advisory committee, which includes, if I may point out, a representative from the Western Canada Wilderness Committee in terms of discussing about what's going to be happening with 100th Avenue and the overall issues with regards to the roads. They've been in discussion for some time with regards to Fraser Highway. They also expressed some concerns with regards to the fact that there was a so-called temporary light put at 144 and Fraser Highway, when there had been hopes that that road might be closed down, and that entire section that's now bifurcated by the road would be become one unit. Also, a real concern is that there's only been a general arborist report. And when we're going to be developing an area such as this, which is contiguous to an extremely valuable unit of land here in the city with regards to natural areas, it would appear to be, for this particular site that's being looked at, that there be a thorough assessment by both arborists and wildlife assessors, so that we know exactly what is there. I'm very concerned with regards to, if this goes ahead, that those assessments will be done on a piecemeal basis, and we won't have any idea about what it is that will be lost when it is the council considers the various developments coming forward. So instead of a general arborist report, I think there ought to have been still time for it, I would think, a thorough assessment with regards to the tree situation and wildlife. Because quite frankly, there's going to be another killing field.
Particularly if we don't know what's there.
Surrey Environmental Partners has said from the very outset, when we started making representations to council, various sundry things, that we consider when there is land adjacent to a park, which is what this is, I certainly did not realize that all of this was belonging to the province after E Division was built, that the highest and best use of any piece of land is for it to remain in its natural state, especially when it's contiguous to an existing park. And we won't... That's our stance still. If the matter... If this unit of land is developed, we have concerns about the fact that there's going to be a lot of people there, and the issue of smoking and fires. And that's highlighted by the fact that I happen to be talking to someone who has been walking through a natural area park in her neighborhood, noticing a great many cigarette butts all over the place. This is going to be an ever-increasing concern that we have with regards to all of our parks. So there's a concern about the increased density that's being proposed for this land, as well as the fact that there are a lot of people to be living there. Were we to have had a thorough assessment with regards to trees and wildlife, then perhaps we could be a bit more specific in asking questions about what might and might not be done. But I'm wondering, in doing what is being proposed, are you able to say that the area where it's demarcated in the report and the guidelines, where the trees are, are you able to say that that is to be set aside and not developed?
Mr. Planner, the area that you showed earlier, I believe it was the circled area for preservation of trees, as well as the... That line of maples. That is to be a tree retention area. Is that determined in perpetuity, or how does that...
Madam Mayor, at this stage, it's been identified as a location where trees should be retained, given their quality. In terms of how that's done, whether it's dedicated park or protected by covenant, that would have to be determined at a later stage.
So it'll be either park or covenant. And what about the area that we're seeing in terms of the riparian area? I'm assuming that's in biodiversity perpetuity, just given its location?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, that area would be protected. The setback distance would be confirmed once an environmental report is completed, but that area would be protected in perpetuity, yes.
And just while we're at it, we may as well define the area adjacent to the park and these current lands, there is a buffer of what, 33 meters?
33 feet, 10 meters.
10 meters, 33 feet, okay.
Okay, our letter said that there was a discrepancy in the report, and staff had included 33 feet. Your honour and counsel, with regards to this issue, one of the comments that was sent in return was that there would be assessments as each development came up, and that is one real concern. If this is going to be done, once again, I reiterate, we need to have ahead of time the very thorough arborist report assessment and the wildlife assessment, so that we understand what it is that's there now, and what might be done to facilitate the moving of wildlife, et cetera. It's indeed possible, if it's realistic. In addition to which, I note that there are heritage trees, significant trees highlighted on this report, and I would certainly hope that regardless of what's decided, that no development will be facilitated in having those removed in any way or threatened in any way. We simply are losing too many, as far as the whole city is concerned. Regret that this has been a somewhat disjointed presentation.
That's fine, Deb. Thank you very much for your comments. I saw several other hands up. Could I just get a sense of where we're going? Yes, sir. How about you coming up next? And then we'll take you with the subdoses?
My name is Bill Potma, and I live on... At 13880101 Avenue in the Odyssey Tower, and my view is to the green area. I also support... Waddon spoke as a first speaker, and I'm a member of the Green Heritage Society. And I've had two comments. First of all, 70% of it is now not park, but forest. Much of it is green there, and some beautiful trees. The second thing is that if you give this up to redevelopment to something else, then we should never have named the street Green Timbers Way, because you're taking away pieces, one after another, first the... The building for the Mounted Police, and now this, and Jimmy Patterson Center. So it's piecemeal, giving it away. If it's not a park, it certainly is a forest. And I would like to just... I'm the person that wrote to the staff and to the council last week, and I just want to identify myself. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments, and for the good work that you do with the Green Timbers. Counselor Gill, do you have a question of him, or of the staff?
Madam Mayor, just I understand that the property is currently zoned RA, which is residential acreage. That being said, I know that the current OCP designation, OCP stands for the Official Community Plan, is designated mixed employment. Just wanting to understand from staff, when was that designation given to this property? Do we know when it was designated as mixed employment?
Madam Mayor, through the Counselor Gill, it would have been when the city adopted the new OCP.
So prior to that adoption, would that... I just wanted to understand that was this particular property and that particular OCP adopted at that time, or was it adopted previously? And let... There's every several years that we do adopt the OCP plan.
It was through this new OCP. Thank you.
This residential... Okay, ma'am.
Good evening. My name's Janice Tancone, and I live at 13925 Fraser Highway. And so I live basically right behind that Options Building area. I hadn't planned on speaking today, so excuse me if it's a little bit disjointed as well. I just... I had a few questions, actually, as well as some concerns, but mainly, I was just trying to look at that map where it showed all the trees and everything. If you could put that back up again, just for a second. I just wanted to ask about, like, I noticed it showed the part that's looking to be developed... Oh, sorry, the one with the... Where it shows where you're going to have "keep the trees" with the stripes? Yes, thank you. So here we have, you say, subject property, 990140th Street, 5.78 acres. Then you have your tree retention area. I'm just wondering, what exactly is the size there? Because it's not written down, so I was curious how much property is going to be dedicated to trees in the plan?
That looks to be about six acres, and I'd say that looks to be about three quarters to an acre. Am I close, Mr. Planner?
Madam Mayor, you're very close, yes.
Okay, so, pretty tiny, in other words. Okay, so, and then my next question is, so you're talking about putting some sort of shelters, transitional housing. Where are you thinking of going with that? Because I'm not exactly sure what we're talking about here, because there is a lot of transitional housing already, that according to Surrey's very own bylaw officers, where a lot of our homeless people and our drug-addicted residents of Surrey refuse to go when there is housing available. So they refuse to go because, I was actually quote-unquote told, because they don't want their nine o'clock curfew. I just discovered a little campsite, if you will, in the nature reserve, which I think is very dangerous. And apparently, I was also told by one of the city's very own bylaw officers, that this is... Has not changed in seven years, that this person has been a bylaw officer. So, and there are these certain areas throughout the parks and everything where these people are going, and it's causing a danger. They set up a booby trap, pardon me, you know, their own feces is there, it's a danger to our animals, to wildlife, to people. But, you know, I'd like to say that transitional housing helps, and I don't know the statistics, so I can't really speak as an authority. But I'd like to know what is going to go in there, and how is that going to be different from what we already have? How is that going to convince those people who do need the help the most, take up that help? How is that going to help clean up our community, which is already crime-ridden, full of low-time drug dealers? That, you know, I'd like to have a nice walk with my dog without, you know, having an incident, which have, you know, I walk my dog three, four times a day. So I want to know, how is this going to help the community at large? Okay, I don't mean just a certain aspect. So I'm just not sure what the proposal is exactly, for what kind of a shelter are we talking? Like, I don't really understand.
We're talking several amenities on the site, some of which will be seniors' housing and care facilities, and the transitional housing for those that are interested in being sheltered. And frankly, that number has escalated in the city over the last number of years, and we, in fact, do not have enough transitional housing. That's why you'll see campsites on occasion in the city. In fact, we have been working diligently with those that recently set up camp, and we had, with the help of B.C. Housing, moved them around the region, but not in the city, because there's no housing left in the city. So I'm not sure if that helps you, but that's... It's a mix of housing opportunities on that site, as well as care facilities.
Okay, so then another question for you. Now, again, I haven't done my research, so sorry, I wasn't expecting to speak, but I was wondering about, you know, I know that there is, at least from what I've observed, there is a vacant building that is already constructed, and it's quite large, and it's right on 104 next to Superstore. So I don't know who owns it, but I was just wondering, what I've heard is they film movies in it, but it's a building that's already built. Couldn't we, you know, save money, make better use, put something there?
If that's... It's an interesting concept, but if the building was for sale, and we do know who owns it, it's simply not a building that's for sale.
So it's a privately owned?
It is a privately owned, yes.
It's fenced off, it's not usable?
Of course, but it is not our property, and it is private owner.
Okay. And then, you know, I don't know if I could say really anymore than anyone else has said to protect the environment, and I don't know, a lot hasn't been said about the animals, the wildlife. That's what I'm a little bit concerned about as well, with the traffic going on. Right now, it's fenced off to try and keep, I think, the animals out as well. But, so I just wondered what kind of research has been done there? Has there been any research done in that regard? How much research will be done in that regard?
I think we heard that from a previous speaker as well, relative to both a broader arborist study and a wildlife study, so...
So that's something that...
That has not been done, of course. Not at this point. This is about the land use and the comments on the land use, not about the elements that will be required as we go forward, or if it moves forward.
So if it moves forward, will these be considerations then?
Yes.
They will, okay. All right. Okay, I mean, so you've already stated it's not part of Green Timbers, but I have to agree, it's, you know, if it looks like a park... agree, it's, you know, if it looks like a park, right? If it looks like a forest, it kind of is a forest, you know? And that is one thing, when I moved out here, I actually came from the west end of Vancouver, and two things that had me, two reasons why I actually moved to this area of Surrey, besides the affordability, was that it was touted as being the new Vancouver, the new downtown Vancouver. And then, but to me, I'm thinking, it's more like the east side. This is what we're turning into. And what are these fast food restaurants that we're talking about here? Like, really? What about culture, if we're going to have anything? I just don't understand why we're just doing the same old, same old, all the time, and I think there'd be better properties to do this at. And, you know, we're having, there's so many cookie cutter homes around Surrey, the trees are just being chopped down everywhere, and here would be another example. And there's a lot of accidents there, like other people have said, so, you know, I'm a little bit concerned, and, I mean, I could go on forever.
Thank you.
Clearly, I'm against this.
Thank you for your comments.
My name's Grant Rice, I live at 10378 125A Street. I'm against this rezoning of the land, because I love Green Timbers. I moved to this neighborhood, I live about two kilometers from here, west of here, I moved to this neighborhood precisely because of places like Green Timbers Urban Forest. I know that you're saying that it's not part of the forest, not part of the protected forest, but it should be part of the protected forest. When an opportunity like this arises, when you can purchase land from the province, I don't know what you paid for it, but whatever you paid for it, it probably was well worth it as a forest, as an adjunct to the Green Timbers Urban Forest. When they put in the E-division, RCMP E-division, I was shocked at the size of it, the scope, the amount of parking. You could probably see that facility from outer space. It is
With any luck.
If you fly in, it's this giant light and a big hole in a forest, is what it is. And it's being, and other speakers have said, the Green Timbers Urban Forest is being chipped away. Back at the 92nd Avenue, where the school district is, they just cut down a whole swath of trees for their new building that they just built recently, last two years ago. So we're chipping away at this, piece by piece, and then the next step is when the, when the light rail or whatever type of rapid transit we have coming through, again, we're going to lose thousands of trees. Like Jeb Jack has said before, there should have been at least a full arborist report done on this site before any consideration to rezoning was done. When I look at it from Cosmos, just a quick count of trees from the canopy that I could see, zooming in on it, there's at least 500 trees that are going to be lost in the site. You add that to the thousands more that'll be lost for expansion of Fraser Highway, this is not, this is not death by a thousand cuts, this is a death by several thousand cuts. And I think we have to stop the madness. I am all for transition housing, for all of these good things that are being proposed on this site, but it's not the right site. Already, the city has purchased property near the hospital that went to third reading for zoning for emergency sheltered housing, and for some reason, we backed off. I don't know if it was outcry from the community, or whatever, but all that land that's being designated north of the hospital is the ideal place, because it is already zoned for that purpose. And there's very few single-family homes left, and as those, as those people transition and move out, the folks that can consolidate those properties, that could then build these types of facilities. But in the meantime, I agree with the previous speaker, who spoke about that Asian Centre on 104th Avenue. The city has used their powers of expropriation to take a golf course and to build this city hall on this property. Why don't we expropriate that property? It's been sitting there for 18 years empty, used maybe once a year for the mayor's gala. And here it sits there. It sits, it sits there. It's a waste of space, it's, it's just, it's a travesty, that that could be repurposed. It's assessed at $21 million, almost 300,000 square feet. If you take that for $21 million, and yet add another $10 million to it, and you could repurpose it as a shelter, as refugee housing, you could do all kinds of wonderful things with it. It will be on a rapid transit line, the B-line bus goes down there. It's a perfect location, and it's sitting there empty, 18 years. This is ridiculous. So this land here is, it's a perfect place for parks, it's a perfect place to keep the trees, perfect place for wildlife, and it's not the place where we want to start cutting down more trees in this city.
Thank you for Grant for your comment. Elizabeth, you're up next, and could I just see from the audience how many more speakers we have on this? One? Okay. Good evening.
Good evening, Your Worship, Mayor Hepner, and Steve, members of council. My name's Elizabeth Modell, I'm the CEO for the Downtown Surrey Business Improvement Association, and we represent, more or less, 1,500 businesses and property members in downtown Surrey. As the downtown Surrey business organization, part of our mandate is to ensure that Surrey's economic growth prospers and continues to expand into new business sectors which contribute significantly to the diversity and the evolution of a dynamic city, and of course, the city's tax base. We actually support the zoning change as outlined by the city. And let me firstly address the care facility, the emergency shelter, the transitional housing, the offices and the residences of the zoning change. The Board of Directors for the Downtown Surrey BIA have appreciated the ongoing dialogue we've had with the City of Surrey. We recognize the importance of optimizing the support and services for some of Surrey's most vulnerable populations, as well as continue to meet the needs of a growing business district. After all, we are the second metropolitan center south of the Fraser, and soon to be the largest city in British Columbia. So the reasons are, firstly, it is ideally situated adjacent to an ambulatory healthcare services and support resources. It does not compromise the business community, and therefore, the economic growth projections and long-term tax revenue for the city. Thirdly, the peaceful and healing setting poses an optimal outcome for this highly vulnerable population. And fourthly, the residential component is vital to address the medical requirements for our memory loss of our seniors, whom are unable to live independently and require assistance with everyday activities. So we do support this zoning, rezoning of this property. Secondly, we'd like to address the bioenergy facility. The DSBIA supports Surrey's energy shift initiative in creating facilities for reduction of its carbon footprint. As the City of Surrey develops in its role as a major urban center, we're shaping growth and creating healthier communities by goals outlined in the city's sustainability charter. The DSBIA believes it's important for governments to demonstrate leadership by advancing new technologies and reducing energy consumption. With building a city from the ground up, the city needs to make the right choices, do the right things, and take concrete actions to advance sustainability in the city's operation and in our community. Long-term, it all makes business sense. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Please respect speakers, I think they were respecting you.
Did she give her address, like every other speaker did? She didn't give her address, where she lives, like every other speaker.
Madam Clerk, do you have the address for the Downtown Surrey BIA, for whom she's representing?
Yes, we do.
Thank you. I think there was a final speaker.
Hi, my name's Elizabeth Holcombe, and I live in Unit 55, 9955 140th Street. I'm nervous.
That's all right.
But out of everybody that's taught, I think I live the closest to this. This is going to go right across the street from my house. Other than, there's a new four-story frame apartment building that you guys said was okay to go out my bedroom window. But when we bought here, over 20 years ago, the forest was a big draw. And I look out my bedroom window, I see all the trees, I don't want to see a building there. I don't want transitional or homeless shelters there. There's an elementary school right around the corner. We put steel gates in our complex to keep people like that out of our complex, because there's a huge problem in that area. And it's gotten a little better, but if you do this, it's going to be right back or worse than it was. 140th Street, like another gentleman said, when I moved there, it was one lane each way and parking. It's now two solid lanes, there's no parking out there. The traffic is unbelievable. You can have people lined up a block at the light. If we have more development in this area, the street can't handle what's on it now. You look down that street, as another gentleman said, from the corner down, it's a beautiful street right now, the way it's got a nice little curve, we've got all the pretty trees. I do respect what she said about the business development and the plan and stuff, but is it going across the street from your house? I don't want this in my neighborhood. I understand, I did a little bit of reading, but I didn't read everything, that something was approved near the hospital, which someone else said, and the resident said, no, not in my neighborhood. Well, I'm saying, not in mine either. And that's about all I have to say.
Thank you very much for your comments. Do we have any other speakers on this bylaw? Last call. Okay, Madam Clerk, next bylaw, please.
Next bylaw is Zoning Amendment Bylaw 18706 and Zoning Amendment Bylaw 18707. The address is 5810 152nd Street and 5811 Kettle Crescent West. The applicants are Terence Austin, Carol Yost, Mandipin Swarangi, Joe Hall, Tarsim, and Sarinder Joe Hall. The applicant is seeking to rezone the site from one-acre residential and comprehensive development to comprehensive development and half-acre residential gross density. The applicant's proposing to subdivide into 13 half-acre residential lots. In addition, a development variance permit is being sought to reduce the minimum lot width from the proposed lots nine and 12, in order to provide an efficient subdivision layout.
We have on table petition, with 34 signatures opposed, and I have seven speakers lined up to speak to this bylaw. First speaker is Oswald, I think it's Cellar or Sealer.
Ms. Oswald Seiler?
I was close.
Very good, thank you. And it's 15285 58th Avenue.
Good evening.
Yeah, good evening, honourable board. Mayor and councillors, I don't oppose the development, it's just, we have a real water problem, drainage problem already, and that's our big concern. And my wife Dorothy will give you a bit more details. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and councillors.
Good evening.
We do have serious reservations about the number of homes that are proposed in a small area. We are directly south of the property in question, and we have a serious groundwater problem in our area. Our, our yard has already been redone, all our drainage tiles and so on, in our backyard, in the west side of our property. It's like a sponge out there, all winter, until about two weeks ago, it was spongy in our whole backyard, because the water is draining down from the west and from the north, onto our property. Two weeks ago, I dug a hole right next to our neighbor's property on the west side of our property. It's clay in one shovel full of dirt out, and it's full of water, the whole hole, it hadn't, it hadn't rained for about a week or 10 days at the time that I did this. There's clay underneath and water, right to the surface of the grass in the lawn. Our, our neighbor next door has had to, they, they've been working for about three weeks on their property. They've had people there digging up all around their house, putting in some sort of protection for their basement, because the water is also going in their basement. It was going in our basement before my husband redid all this drainage. But apparently, there's an underground stream coming from this property in question for this redevelopment. And every time it rains, even a very little bit, you can see the water draining from our properties, like the properties on 58th Avenue are draining down the hill to Kettle Creek, Kettle Crescent East there. You can see the water on the road, coming from the properties and going down the road. So something has to be done about this water course, before anything is done with allowing so many buildings
Can we just, I'm just going to ask our engineer to make some comment on the, the current drainage under the acreage, and how that would look under half acres?
Madam Mayor, we have certain design criteria requirements that the development, that the developer's engineer will have to meet, and we will certainly be coordinating with them as part of the servicing design, to review the delegation's concerns.
And, and so, yeah, the delegation is south of those, of this application, so the design would include how to protect those that are
That's, that's correct, Madam Mayor. The development is at a higher elevation than the delegation's property, and that's just the, the natural contour, and we'll certainly be addressing that as part of the servicing design.
Okay, would they be dealing directly with the homeowners, to help them understand what that would ultimately look like, then?
We can certainly have a discussion with, with them to coordinate that.
Okay, thank you.
We would appreciate that.
Thank you, Dorothy, for your comments.
We just, you know, as long as that is really studied before this building is allowed, then
We'll make sure in any consideration of this, that that, that is duly noted, as we hear from other speakers, there may be more that we need to look at.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dorothy. Cindy Daglish, Daglish? Cindy?
Good evening, thank you. So currently, I've, oh, sorry, you've got my address, actually.
Yes, we have it here.
Yeah, so, I live in the neighborhood, Sullivan Elementary on the corner of 60th and 152nd, has zero spaces, there's portables. Cambridge Elementary, just two blocks away, at 150th and 60th, no space. I think they're at eight portables, six or eight portables. Goldstone, going into the next school year, just a couple blocks over, a little more west, zero spaces, getting ready for some portables, it's two years old. 142nd, Woodward Hill, McLeod Road, both of them, no spaces. Woodward Hill, portables. McLeod Road, needs portables. Where are the kids from this development and the huge development that's CDBL 12282, where are they going to go to school? The 13 half-acre homes probably can manage that somehow, but when literally across the street you've got 181 townhomes coming into play, where are those children going to school? Especially because that development was originally put in place for institutional use. It was supposed to be, in the neighborhood concept plan, it states that it's supposed to be a hospital. It got sold off for a song.
These, the land use that is before us right now?
Yeah, no, the one right across the street, but it all ties together because all of it matters to where are the kids going to go to school?
I appreciate the schooling question, and it's clearly a really important element within all of the city where we're growing. And it is a provincial responsibility, and we are actually, I believe, so...
No, no, no.
But relative to this evening, this is the 13, this particular land use is what we have to deal with?
Okay, so I'll stick to just that.
Okay.
So Surrey School Trustee Laurie McNally put forward a motion that was unanimously voted in favor by the city school trustees to put a temporary halt on all developments in those dense populated areas, including the South Newton area, where schools overcrowding has been an issue for years. The mayor responded, yourself responded, that placing a hold on development was not the resolution. We know full well that even if the capital funds were available tomorrow, we are three years away from a new school. If slowing development is not the solution, then what other immediate resolution do yourself and other council members have? How are you going to find seats for those students? Why is development keep going when we do not have seats? What responsibility do you take for that? What is your communication to the province to ensure there's schools in place when you approve those development plans? What is your responsibility?
Is that a question?
They're all questions. We've been asking them for, I've been emailing you, getting no response. I've been asking for meetings with you, I'm getting no response. I've only been able to meet with Bruce Hain. How are we, how are we getting answers? We're not, we're getting political answers in the media.
Well, and you're going to get a political answer here, too.
Why?
Because we're politicians. I'm telling you right now that we cannot, nor should we, absolutely close the door...
We're not saying to close the door, we're saying to halt it temporarily until the province ponies up the money for schools.
Well, we'll be working with the province to make sure that happens.
How? How? What is your communication channels with the province?
I'll deal with that offline, I'm not going to deal with that here tonight.
So you will accept a meeting with me then?
Is it going, yes.
Thank you.
I don't know who you are, but yes. Now I have next, looks like, I cannot read it, it looks like Tom Oleen. Nope, okay, I'm going to look, I'm going to go with Pam Brackenbury.
Good evening. I'm representing the neighborhood north of the development, and I believe you all received a letter from our neighborhood with signed, letter from our neighborhood.
Petition?
Do you have that?
We have a petition.
Yeah, the petition, yeah.
Yes, we do.
Okay. And I'm not going to go through the whole thing, but the critical piece of this is the safety issue, and that is if Kettle Crescent East is pushed through between the old area where we are north and the new development. There seems to be no absolutely necessary reason for that to happen. The people that are on the south side now have their way out, they've been doing it for years. I've lived in this neighborhood for 20 years, and we have one of those neighborhoods that you find once in a lifetime. It is absolutely wonderful, we support each other, and we're all concerned that this new road coming through is going to be driving. If you take a look at the map that you have there, you can see how many extra vehicles could be coming through and out onto 152.
Can we get a better map than this that shows the transportation? How that will ultimately look?
Do you have this one? That's better.
Is that better?
Yes, yeah. So now we need to locate, okay, Kettle Crescent East at the, on this side.
By the green space?
Yes, exactly. Now, the proposal says they want to put it through. Putting it through, as you can see, will gather all those other, there's no stopping all those other vehicles from coming through, what essentially, right at this moment, is a quiet, safe neighborhood. It will allow people coming from the other end to go out, everybody can access onto 152, but this could also end up dragging people that are cutting, say, off 64th, for example, they could come down 156, get into the Sullivan Station area, and that brings you right up into there, and then they could get out on 152. If they're trying to beat traffic. And we have, at the point where it would come through the break and come around the corner, you can see it going into Kettle Crescent North, right on that corner, that's almost a 90-degree. People misjudging, whatever, we've got children there, we've got, not that pets should be roaming free, but they can get out, that can happen. People are well aware in the neighborhood of how we operate, everybody's aware of everybody else's homes, and we're just requesting it's not, it's just a little tweak, actually, on our revised plan that we sent to you, just causes Kettle Crescent East on the north side to become a cul-de-sac rather than come straight through. It doesn't take away any of the lots from the development, it doesn't cause any changes to the people that are already on the south side, they can still get to where they were going the same way they were, and it makes our neighborhood the same neighborhood that we've had for 20 years.
Okay, I appreciate those comments, thank you very much.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I live at 5793 Kettle Crescent East, so I would be right on the other side of that forest at the dead end. We've been 30 years in Sullivan Station, we built our second home there before the community plan was completed. When we purchased our lot and built there, we knew what the community plan was, and we knew one day that that road would go in front of our home. What we have beside us, which hasn't been mentioned, is the temporary road. Behind us, we have a green space, I think if there's another map you can put up, we're on Kettle Crescent East, we have a green space behind us, we have a green space beside us, and right now there's a temporary road, that you can see the temporary road that goes up to 58th Avenue. In the front of my home, right at the corner there, there is a stop sign, which has never been observed by anyone. We have children coming out of that forest, we've lived there for 20 years this year. So I think I can fairly say that that dead end has been, as much as we love the forest beside us, we also realize the developers bought this land to develop. We've always known that. Anybody on the other side of that road also knows that, as our homes were there first. Would we love the forest to stay? Absolutely. But that's not what's going to happen. But what we want to make sure of is that that temporary road is going to be removed when the road goes through. We realize that the developer, and the developer lives in the neighborhood, the developer knows our neighborhood, we need to make sure that that temporary road comes out. We were one of the unfortunate ones that when we did build, we did find the spring, which caused us much more, you know, in construction cost, there is a bad water problem in that area. But as much as we would love the forest to be there forever, it's not going to be. It's going to be developed, that road's going to go through, but we need some assurances from council and the mayor that that temporary road is going to come out so that we won't have traffic racing in front of our house and beside our house.
Okay, well, let's see what the engineer can speak to that for us, please. What is the intention with respect to the current temporary road, or what looks to be a temporary road?
Madam Mayor, when this development proceeds, a lot of the road network will be realized. This is one of the last remaining properties in the area that has the missing links, as well as providing a direct access out to 152nd, and definitely to the delegation's concern, the portion of the temporary road along, the portion of 58th Avenue east of the cul-de-sac will be removed.
It will be removed.
And is that going to be done by the developer or by the city?
Mr. Engineer, who does that work?
Madam Mayor, the work will be done as part of the servicing for the development site by the developer.
Be expected by the developer.
So when that road is opened, can we be assured that at the same time that that temporary road is closed and that we don't have both?
That would be the intention.
Okay, perfect, thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. That is all I have listed to speak to this bylaw. Is there anyone else? Yes, sir? You, sir?
Good evening, everybody. My name is Max Nazar. I live in 15367 Kettle Crescent North. I'm fairly new in the neighborhood, I'm only there for one year. I agree with everything that's on the letter, I agree with my neighbors. The only thing that I'm not acquainted is why don't I get a more clear picture of all the development? For example, 150, I think it's 153 Road is a cul-de-sac at the moment? Let me get my bearings for a second here.
Certainly.
When I drive to 152nd to 64, this is, it's kind of a road that I'm not sure if the city owns that land or is a private property. Rumors are that it's an owner that owns a property there, and so that is one issue. I cannot go south, I have to go always north. If, I cannot exit for, at the moment, on 58A, south, I have to turn north. In that particular corner now, that intersection, is where the new development will be, and it's a set of light, control lights. The map is not very clear what will happen to the new sets of light. Will I be able to turn left, south? Will I be able to go Panorama Drive straight through and north? I would like to have a clear picture and to have more of an understanding how all this development will work.
And, and I'm sorry, did you say you were on Kettle Creek North?
Kettle Crescent North.
Kettle Crescent North?
Yes.
Okay.
And the number is 15367. And I realize if we have that road open, Kettle Crescent East, it would be an issue with people going a little bit faster, because some people are driving a little bit over the speed at the moment, not very fast, but they have no choice to break down. It's a down, the grade is quite large, I would say it's probably in the order of 5%. I would like to know if this development could go ahead the way it is, but why couldn't that road be closed and in the future reassessed after 152nd traffic lights are organized and we know how we operate? And then we'll reassess that. At the moment, I would like to keep it closed. I have four grandchildren, they play on my yard, and I can see accidents. The speed bumps will not solve the problem, and I think now is the time to make this a little bit more clear for everybody. And so I will, our concern are a little bit more, we understand, we get educated on the whole picture, not just a little bit at the time, and in the future, then we have to come back and, and it will be more application for other developments. I think it will be a large development on the corner of Panorama Drive and 152nd. I'm not sure what's going to happen there. It's all townhouses, I believe.
Counselor again.
And the corner on Panorama Drive and 152nd.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a question to engineering staff, just want to better understand what traffic calming opportunities that we may have based on the proposed Kettle Creek East, Kettle Creek West, and the roads that connect into 152. So are we requesting the developer to put any traffic calming devices in?
Madam Mayor, at this time, there are no particular or specific traffic calming improvements that are planned for this neighborhood, but we can certainly assess that. As well as to the delegation's points, 58A Avenue will be extended to 152nd Street. There will be a full movement at that intersection, so there will be the opportunity to turn left and go south on 152nd, the opportunity to go straight through to Panorama Drive as well. There are also a number of currently temporary accesses along 152nd Street that will be closed, and those accesses currently are restricted to right-in, right-out only, given that 152nd Street is a arterial road.
Does that help?
In regard 153rd, will that remain open?
153rd is a cul-de-sac, is it not?
Yes.
Madam Mayor, 153rd Street does have a statutory right-of-way that provides access out to 152nd through a private lot that's currently shown as RHG on the map, and that too will be removed as part of this application.
It'll be closed.
And closed, yes.
Be closed.
Yes. Will stay, become just a cul-de-sac.
Okay.
Okay, does that help?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good night.
I think, Deb, you were up next.
I just wanted to point out that, notwithstanding the fact that the developer is going to be giving 15% of the property to open space, and it does look as if the areas that are going to go to open space are the ones most lushly treed, notwithstanding that, 157 trees, all told, are on this property, and 147 are going to be destroyed, so there will be only 10 left. And of a required replacement of 222, only 48 will actually be replaced, leaving a deficit of 174, for which there will be a donation to the Green City Fund of $52,200. But nonetheless, just wanted to bring to council's attention the high percentage of the trees that are being lost in this development, notwithstanding, as I said, the green spaces that are set aside.
Thank you very much for your comments, Deb, on that. Is there anyone else wishing to speak to this bylaw?
I wasn't planning on speaking, so forgive me if it's a little bit disjointed. I'm a longtime resident of Sullivan...
Just have your name.
Oh, sorry, Erin Jones. I live at 1458660A Avenue. I'm a longtime resident of the Sullivan area. In fact, I went to Sullivan Elementary many years ago. I grew up in Sullivan Station, and I currently am raising my family in Sullivan Heights. And this is an area, just to provide some context, where a daycare was recently forced out of a nearby school due to lack of space, where our secondary school, Sullivan Heights, is on scattered timetables, where access to the school library and the gym is an issue at all of our local elementary schools and high school, where students who currently live in the catchment areas for Sullivan Elementary, where children from this development would attend, and Sullivan Heights Secondary, children who live in these catchments are waitlisted and do not have access to their neighborhood schools. I am watching the neighborhood that I grew up in, and that I love, and that I chose to raise my family in, be eroded. We cannot simply look at these 13 lots in Independence, and I realize that's what you want us to do tonight, but when this is being proposed across the street from 180, approximately, possibly more, townhomes are going in, we cannot ignore that, nor can we ignore the plans for Panorama Drive. It needs to stop. Please, consider Trustee McNally's recommendation on a moratorium in our area, we cannot handle anymore. Thank you.
Thank you. May I get a show of hands for who is, who else wishes to speak to this particular bylaw? No, he are up next, but after you. Okay, you'll be our last speaker, good evening.
Good evening, my name is Maria Myers. I'm the president of the PAC at Echol Woodward Hill, address is 6082 142 Street. About a year ago, I spoke before this very same council regarding a proposal to allow for one of the daycares in our neighborhood to add eight students, eight children for before and after care. And as you know, this is a highly impacted area, we're losing daycares, lots of growth constantly. And that proposal was denied because it would be too much traffic in this one very huge cul-de-sac, I think it's, it's by 138 and 63, for eight students for before and after. So in the time since, several amendments and plans have been authorized for tens and hundreds of new residents in the area, such as the proposal we're looking at this evening. Given the massive, massive growth in South Newton, why is the city not advocating for proper infrastructure? Every morning, when I go to school, I have to go through different zigzags and flag people, there's at least four sets of flag people who are following bylaw, who get us to our school, and then I have to park on the street where I have, about, right now, my husband said I have three nails in my tire, in my car tire, and every morning, the crossing guard speaks to me about, she tells me, she gives you a rundown about all the near misses and hits, because not every single developer and contractor and different person who's bringing services to the area is in compliance with these rules. The traffic calming measures that we've worked with the city very carefully, we've worked with RCMP, we've worked with every power with whom we have access to, to make it safe for our children and our community. Now, I know this is a specific issue, but as Erin Jones said, when we look at all of these issues, just at, one at a time, it's very simple, and we can grow, 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 but what are we doing for the big picture? How are we making it safe for our children? How are we going to support the infrastructure? Can you tell me some of the plans you have to support safety in this area, or to support growth in the schools? That's a question.
Oh, that would be, in terms of what the entire plan looks like, and we'd, you'd have to go back to the neighborhood concept plan, and it was the neighborhood that made the plans, so when they're built out, there's an expectation of a particular level of growth, and most of our plans, if you look at those plans, and we have a meeting of council to discuss that, this very issue, and how to, how to tackle it in a more aggressive fashion that, in this, in this environment, may actually now produce some results. You'll see that within the NCP areas, we actually are not fundamentally getting to those stages of, of anticipated growth. Where we're falling behind is an arena of provincial understanding of getting us those schools built before the over-capacity requirement. Because right now, as, as a member of PAC, I'm sure you understand that they won't build a school until you are in fact over-capacity. That has been so for more than 20 years, and certainly from my 30 years' experience on city councils, or on, as a member of local government, that has never shifted. And what we're seeing now is a groundswell of support for building schools in advance of that over-capacity requirement that has been so prevalent within provincial decision-making arenas, no matter who is in government. And I think that's probably about all I could say right now, is because we're really, really making every effort we can at this council to see that that shifts, and that that infrastructure goes along at the same time as the other significant critical pieces of infrastructure for which we are responsible for.
So then I have some follow-up questions, though you're talking about the NCP, but what we see are amendments to the NCP and the growth that's happening is beyond that plan. And then, and then again, as a PAC member, which you, you pointed out, so there's the problem that the district needs to talk to the city, needs to talk to the province. My full-time job isn't advocating, but yet, I'm spending 80 hours a week trying to, and all I hear is every single politician passing the buck. What I would like to know is, can you come one morning with me where I try to get my son across the street safely, in all of these areas where you've approved additional growth, where you've changed the plans, where you don't have bylaws that support safety for our children, where you don't have police, where you don't have things that make this a good community? You know, and I've said this before, I moved to Canada to get away from the United States of America. My brother was killed by a gang member in the States in a random gang shooting situation. He wasn't a gangster, we're not a bad family. I'm not here to hear this baloney, I would like to hear positive interaction between the city, between the Board of Trustees, between the province. I'm, we could pass the buck all day long, but where's results? Let's walk that talk.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Madam Clerk, next bylaw, please.
The next bylaw is Land Use Contract Number 85 Partial Discharge Bylaw 18704 and Zoning Amendment Bylaw 18705. The address is 1746061A Avenue. The applicants are Sorawa Sethi and Anjali Sharma. The applicants are requesting to discharge Land Use Contract Number 85 from the property to allow the underlying single-family residential zone to come into effect. The applicants are seeking to rezone the property from single-family residential to comprehensive development. The proposal is to permit a childcare center within a single-family dwelling for a maximum of 20 children.
We have one letter of support, one letter in opposition, and no one signed up to speak to this bylaw. Is there anyone wishing to speak to bylaw number five? First call? Second call? Third and final call? Bylaw number six, Madam Clerk.
Is zoning amendment bylaw 18708. The address is 2532 164th Street. The applicants are Frazoli Penjani, Shirzali Jamani, Salem Jamal, and Dawud Albahe. The applicant is seeking to rezone the property from one-acre residential to single-family residential 10 and single-family residential 12. The applicants are proposing to divide into 17 small single-family lots.
I have no correspondence on this, and no one signed up to speak to this bylaw. Is there anyone wishing to speak to bylaw number six?
Deb Jacks, Surrey Environmental Partners. The basis of my comments here and the next issue are the same. There's 95 trees in total on this property, and they're going to dispose of 95 trees. The required replacement is 130, but all that is going to be replaced are six. So there will be, if I understand this report, six trees for 17 lots. But what's germane is that were the deficit trees, for which there's usually a cost of $300 per tree, fully compensated for, that would sum to $37,200. But because of a provision in the tree bylaw, which says that per acre, the fee is capped at $15,000, the cash in lieu is going to be $29,107. So that leaves a deficit, a shortage, of $8,093, which represents 27 trees. We have real concern about this kind of figuring, so that there is a loss to the city overall, in this instance, of 27 trees, in terms of the monies that are going into the Green City Fund.
Thanks, Deb, for your comments. So the comment is around the way we formula, the formula works?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak to bylaw number six? Last call? Did you have your hand up, sir? No? Okay, Madam Clerk, bylaw number seven.
Is official community plan amendment bylaw 18713 and zoning amendment bylaw 18714. The address is 13160 20th Avenue. The applicant is Laurent Woods Limited. The applicant is seeking to redivide the property from suburban to urban, and rezone the property from one-acre residential to single-family residential. The applicant is proposing to subdivide into 20 single-family residential lots. In addition, a development variance permit is being sought to reduce the lot depth on proposed lot 16, and reduce setbacks on several of the proposed lots in order to retain trees.
We have several pieces of correspondence on table relative to this, one petition of 30 signatures in support, one petition of 19 signatures in opposition, and several people not wishing to speak, to speak in support, four, and not wishing to speak against, five, and several people signed up to speak. The first one is Leslie Cormack Wilson. Ms. Leslie, good evening.
Hello there. Been a long night already. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, so, Your Worship, Mayor Hepner, and esteemed council members, thank you for the opportunity to present our comments on this proposed development. My name is Leslie Cormack Wilson, I live at 1783 Amble Green Drive. I back on to Laurent Elementary School. We presented a petition, I'm here actually representing 41 households. The petition we brought forward originally had 30 signatures. Yesterday, we got another 11, when we provided the details that were on the City of Surrey site about the development. So there was 30 original signatures and additional 11 yesterday. Those signatures include a mix of longtime Amble Green residents and some newer residents, and also a mix of people with children at the school currently, and those who have had children attend the school over the past 30 years. I don't know if you're really familiar with the Amble Green neighborhood, but it is quite a unique neighborhood. It was developed in the early 80s, and it is one of the few subdivisions that are kind of being developed today that still have a lot of trees, they were left with an awful lot of green space. The trees were maintained, there were no sidewalks originally, no curbs, it's very narrow streets, and there were originally a restrictive covenant on the subdivision outlining the types of residents that could be there, it had to be single-family, no rentals, no street parking, so there were quite a few controls in place for, for, I believe, till the early 90s. And Amble Green Drive actually runs to the rear of Laurent Elementary School. So when the school was originally built, it was constructed as a neighborhood school, so if you look at the site there, you can see that the school, I'm not sure if that's the best outline there, but the school is really in the center of the neighborhood, and it really was designed to serve the local residents. So most of the children in that, in Laurent and in Amble Green subdivisions that butt up to that school, walk to school. That's traditionally how it's been over the last 30 years. The school board, a few years ago, Unilatory designated Laurent Elementary as a French immersion school, which is now made it a destination school. So a vast majority of parents drive their children to, to school now. So we have faced increasing traffic, traffic problems, traffic control problems, and we have a lot of parents bypassing the entrance off 131, which takes you to the front of the school, and instead shortcut and come through Amble Green Drive and to the rear of the school. So our concern has always been that we have a lot of issues with traffic on a very narrow road where we had no sidewalks, so it was putting a lot of the children that had traditionally walked to school at risk. Parents were reluctant to send their kids, they took them walking, in fact, some neighborhood, some people in the neighborhood have had to drive their kids because they're worried about them being on the street because of the extreme traffic that was starting to use the back. So this is not about Amble Green so much, is that when we got notice of this development, we got a petition together, which we presented to the developer at the open house at the Laurent School in October. And the goals of that were basically to ensure that the same traffic and pedestrian challenges that we faced in Amble Green weren't going to be repeated at the new development. And that is partly because the school really is now a destination school rather than just a local neighborhood school. We wanted the development to be, and I think you have our petition, so this is basically off the petition, we wanted the development to be single-family, partly so that there is fewer residents per household, and less impact on traffic and parking and student count that would affect the school. We understand that that is exactly what's being proposed, a single-family. We also supported the extension of Laurent to 20th to finally be completed to improve the traffic flow to and from the school. My understanding that that easement has always been there, and that intent was to extend that road, so I understand that's part of the plan. Our other petition was that there would be a crosswalk and traffic lights, possibly a pedestrian light, to be installed at the new intersection of 20th and Laurent. There is an existing crosswalk there, and we didn't want to have any restrictions on turns, so, turns, so we wanted traffic to be able to flow through there very easily, so if people came in off Laurent Drive, they could exit off 131, or vice versa. Or if, alternatively, if you were coming from 16th Avenue, you would be able to flow through and go out the other side. So eliminate bottlenecks, eliminate people doing U-turns in the middle of the street. We wanted Laurent Drive to have sidewalks and curbs on both sides of the road to protect the children that were walking to school, and part of that was to really encourage people, and I know that there's a global initiative on this, is to get children to start walking to school, and get out of the cars, and reduce vehicle emissions. So if people feel that it's safe for their children to walk, and there's a sidewalk, and they're not going to have cars pulling over and blocking their access, they'll send their children by foot. So that's going to reduce the environmental, try that again, environmental impact from vehicle emissions. We wanted safety of the students to be paramount. So my understanding is that the, the project does include sidewalks and curbs, and that there is a crosswalk being installed on 20th Avenue. Not sure... Not sure if that's being considered as a pedestrian light or not. And also that the crosswalk is being moved further east so that it aligns, it'll be in line with the school, so kids won't have to cross the street. We also wanted to see easy access to drop off or pick up students at the entrance of Laurent School because that's been a big bottleneck and it's part of the reason why some parents cite as the reason for coming to the back of the school and parking on Amble Green Drive. And we wanted them, we were urging them to provide some additional parking or at least traffic flow there. We understand from reading the community or the documents on your Surrey website that the developer has committed to providing funds for improved traffic flow at the school for that very purpose.
Let's just confirm that, that, let me just confirm that that is so. Is that, is that correct through the planner, that those funds have been allocated by the We'll ask the applicant when, okay, thank you. I'll just get confirmation of that when the applicant comes forward.
And the last thing we said is that we wanted the developer to leave a neighborhood footprint that they would be proud to live in. And quite frankly, we've been pleasantly surprised and impressed at the commitment of the developer to this project. They've committed to leaving more trees, they're committed to putting the flow-through road, the crosswalk, the sidewalks, and putting children's safety paramount. It's really clear that these are developers that live in the area and are respectful of the area. We see a lot of subdivisions and I know there's been lots of talk here tonight about different subdivisions where they come in and basically all the trees are gone and it's a barren land and we really don't want to see that anymore. And it looks like they've made a big commitment to keeping a lot of the treed areas and leaving some space between the Amble Green subdivision as well, which is highly treed. So it really keeps the character of the area and it appears that they're committed to making safety of the children a priority. So we are very pleased to support this project. I represent forty-one households that back on to the project. However, we would respectfully ask council to approve it and if you are approving it, I urge you to start the roadworks now or as quickly as possible and try to have them completed, that twentieth Avenue diversion, or push through, completed by, before school starts. Because once September comes and we start getting rain and then you have children walking to school through a construction zone, we would just recommend that that be given priority over the actual construction of the lots, just to avoid that potential for children walking through construction zones.
Okay, thank you very much for your comments. I have next Scott Stauffer.
Good evening, Mayor Hepner.
Evening.
Council members, city workers and residents of Surrey. Thank you very much for coming. This is the first public hearing I've been to. My name is Scott Stauffer. I live on nineteen forty-nine Amble Green Drive. I back directly on to the proposed development. And actually, if I could just pass to the document camera, two documents. Give that one first and I'll give you this one as well. Now, of course, this is from Cosmos, the Suri Geospatial System, down nineteen forty-nine at the bottom there. As mentioned, I back right on to, I've spoken with the residents north of me and I've numbered the people immediately to the west will be speaking tonight. I'm speaking against the proposal. However, I just wanted to call out, there seems to be two very polarized views on traffic and safety around the school. I wish to separate and not talk on that subject myself, but I think it's important to see that the people that are supporting the proposed development are actually south of the area. They're concerned about the traffic and the safety. I'm concerned that the developer seems to be offering a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to make, to gain the support. That concerns me greatly. I live on Amble Green Drive. Perhaps I should make a proposal to remove the word "green" from all streets that are having trees removed. From what I've heard this evening from other residents is they want a livable city. They want trees. This wonderful lady over here that's been talking about trees that are kept and which are not retained, I'm very happy that she's come out this evening to speak on many of I just wanted to say there are many trees behind me. I have the best neighbors in the world, Ron and Sarah. No, it's actually not you, you're wonderful people, but it's the eagles, the woodpeckers, the owls and other wildlife that live behind us. When we purchased ten years ago, we knew that Mrs. Laurent would eventually, she was in her eighties, she's now in her nineties, the land that's south of this, if you could, I'm not sure actually how far that goes, but you'll see that the Laurent family has given a lot of property to the city and the school district over the years. She gave the land recent, well, the most recent portion of land that she gave, she did so for the enjoyment of the children. It's interesting to note, jumping to page four of this thirty-six-page proposal that I only got drawn attention to on Thursday, that existed, I found grave discrepancies for what was told in the open house and communicated in the open house and what exists in this document. It concerns me that the only department that seemed to have challenges with this on page four, at the bottom, parks and recreation, and I'll just quickly read that. Parks have some concern about the pressure this project will place on existing parks, recreation and cultural facilities in the neighborhood. No kidding. Throughout this document, it states complimentary to the surrounding, single-family neighborhood. Yet, appendix three, and the only place in this document that it's mentioned, twenty, single-family with suites. That doesn't sound complimentary to the neighbor, the neighborhood. We are RA off to the east or the left on this, right on this diagram, RF on the left. One would think that if the proposal had, actually, if you can push the other document onto the, one would believe if they saw RF, that yes, that would match the density of the houses to the, to the left, to the west in this diagram, as they are RF-zoned. However, when those homes were built, the FAR, the floor area ratio was, I believe, fifty-four percent maximum. Three, approximately three years ago, I understand, that was increased to sixty percent. What does that mean? That means on a thousand-square-meter property, you can put up to six hundred square-meter home. There's a difference there. That's ten, that's eleven percent more home on a lot. So those lots by definition are capable of having significantly more density. When you have a developer submit that and then make a number of recommendations to have setbacks removed, ten setbacks, the solution isn't to get setbacks, the solution is to put fewer lots on that area. When I first went to the open house, I expressed my concern about being, for the trees. I saw diagrams and was encouraged when I saw and heard that the developer wanted to retain trees. If you look at the tree report, you will wonder if that same developer was the one that published this document. There are three hundred and fourteen trees, two hundred and eighty will be removed, retaining thirty-four. They say they want to change the setback for allow trees, but in reality, they simply want to make more money. If they can't live within the existing RF zoning, which they don't even have today, they have RA, if they want to make more money, fine, but not at the expense of the trees, the neighborhood, and the parks department indicates. If the people don't have yards, they're going to want to go to the parks. I'm going to be losing my neighbors, the bald eagles, the owls. I don't have a problem with neighbors. When we moved in, we thought, oh, nine half-acre lots, or nine lots in that space. That seems reasonable, I'll have a new neighbor. I'm sure they'll have reasonable setback and trees and they'll retain those trees. But today, with all those trees gone, I have another challenge, as will some of my neighbors. With four acres of trees, and I'm sorry, I didn't actually bring a Cosmos aerial photo of last year with all the trees, but that area is completely green. The previous Laurent family home, in certain photos, are actually difficult to find. When those trees come down, neighboring houses will also lose trees due to high winds. Those trees need protection of other trees. It is not safe in our community to simply have that removed. The RA zoning was put there for a reason. When I purchased my home, I had that expectation that it would stay that way. This isn't the primary concern I have. The primary concern I have is we were told things along the way and those things changed. The last communication we had did not contain the drastic discrepancies that are put forward in this document. The whole theme of this document states that they want complimentary to surrounding, single-family homes, yet they've got, set up for suites. The previous speaker talked about six things that they wanted. They also told those individuals that there would not be basements, they would be seven-foot crawl spaces. I'm sorry, a seven-foot crawl space is going to turn into a illegal suite. Okay? Maybe some of those become secondary suites. Those secondary suites are required to have one parking spot. With reduced setbacks because of the tight circles, where are people going to park? They're not going to have a driveway that has two lanes in it, it's simply going to be a single-entry driveway. That plan does not provide for parking, whether it be on driveway or on the street. The request for the variances for four, which is the top left, there's going to be no room between the sidewalk and that individual's frontage. Number seven, additionally, no backyard. Have a look at how it juts up to lot number eight. It was expressed to me from the petitioner of the previous speaker, one of the individuals walking around, that he really doesn't care about the development, he just wants safety for the kids in his area. I appreciate that and I think that can be accomplished regardless on what development is chosen, but this to me is just unacceptable. It's late. I think I'm going to let some of the others speak, but I hope that you've heard my plea and the plea of other residents tonight, saying that we want more trees in Surrey.
Thank you for your comments. Karen Phillips?
Thank you very much.
Oh, just a moment, sir, I have a question for you. Counselor Woods?
Sir, development is probably going to happen on this spot. Do you agree there?
I agree that it will happen. I would hope that it does not happen with twenty units, with suites.
What is your view?
My view, if we were to take a look at the FAR for those twenty units, you will not find a single plot within five or six blocks that match it. You'll see that the percentage of the FAR is significantly higher than anything around it and I think you'll find that the suites that you can find in the area, many of the places that have been built with suites, the families actually do not use them as suites.
So what is your thoughts on how many numbers of lots should be on that piece of FAR?
That land was assessed at six million dollars in July. It's sold for ten point five million dollars. The developer figured, oh, I'll just make a submission to council, it'll get passed. He wants to make the most money he can, so he paid ten point five million dollars and he's going to find a way to make it happen at the cost of our long-term happiness and enjoyment of our land.
You didn't answer my question, though, sir.
How much do I feel? I would love, I would love to have nine.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Gill?
Madam Murrs, sir, you made reference to the property to the immediate west. Now, just to be really careful, the properties to the west are currently zoned RF, which is what the applicant is proposing today.
That's correct.
I do appreciate that there has been changes to the RF zone, but if one were to rebuild per se on one of those lots, they would be permitted the current bylaws.
Absolutely. And if somebody wanted to take an RA lot from my neighborhood and change it to an RF, they could make an application to do so as well, sir.
So what I'm trying to understand is your view on the property to the immediate west. If one were to rebuild on those lots, he would, or she would be permitted the FAR that you speak of because that is our current bylaw. When those homes are built, they were built on a previous bylaw.
Exactly. And that's something that I hope council would consider. However, this is a situation where it's currently zoned RA, the application is to make RF, but wait, we want to make ten exceptions to RF for trees. No, I'm sorry, you're cutting down out of three hundred and fourteen, two hundred and eighty of those trees. The ones you're keeping are the ones that you can, you can live with. However, what's to prevent a resident from then cutting them down?
So your question in terms of secondary suites in a home, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Planner, but all, single-family homes, whether they're zoned RF, residential, single-family or residential acreage, they all are permitted one suite in that home, correct? Thank you.
I'm sorry, what was your?
I think the counselor was just clarifying that every, single-family home is allowed a suite.
If they are capable of providing an off-street parking space, none of those units would be able to do so.
If, yes, they must have parking space to allocate, that's absolutely correct. So you would assume that those would then therefore not do that. But they can, same as you could or same as anyone else who has an RF-zoned property as well.
But if they can't comply, yet they have it, it'll simply be an illegal one.
Yeah, that's right. They cannot have a suite.
So I guess my, the big term that I'm confused with is density. RF designation doesn't define density. Density is defined by the FAR. So by that definition, none of those homes match. None of them are complimentary to any house in the area. If you have the FAR, if you have the floor space of those homes that we can get from the developer, I can show that to you graphically. I can lay that on your Suri background and show you that that's the case.
Counselor Gill?
Any other questions? If these lots were designated RA, they would be significantly bigger. And if there were significantly bigger homes on these lots, would that be a problem for you?
Significantly bigger homes on a significantly bigger lot?
Correct.
They would need to have the proper offset?
Well, I believe that what, one of the things that the developer is trying to achieve is by putting smaller lots, there'd be smaller homes which would match the neighborhood. That's what I believe the intent is.
Well, we'll hear from the applicant.
To give everyone some insight on the area, many of the homes that were built thirty-five years ago were built without basements for the 35 years ago were built without basements for the reason that the services the city could provide were not low enough to provide sewage. Therefore, many of those homes are on slabs, are on three-and-a-half-foot crawl spaces. The developer is going to be putting, sinking the services deeper, I would assume, where the city is able to do so. Therefore, although from the outside, the home looks just the same as everyone else, well, except that it's 10%, 11% larger, oh, and it varies because they have seven properties with variants. Because of this, it doesn't look like the homes around it, and it has more family members. And a lot of times, you're not going to see the parking.
Thank you very much for your comments. Scott? Tanya? Okay, thank you. It's going to be a long night. Thank you. Tanya? I hope I've said that right. Tanya?
Yes, you did.
Thank you.
Hello. So I've also never been to presenting at a council meeting before. My name is Tanya Phillips, and I live about less than 100 meters from this proposed development, and I'm speaking in to reject it or delay for further review or more neighborhood consultations. I grew up in this area. I've lived here for over 40 years. I enjoy, sorry, raising my family here, and I'm very concerned about how this project will negatively affect the quality of my life and that of my family, the loss of the trees, the construction, the increased traffic and congestion, the safety of my children and the safety of the children that go to Laurent Elementary. I have a vested interest in the community. Obviously, I'm getting emotional about it. So the points I want to speak to are similar to Scott's, the previous speaker, and also to the Amber Green residents. I have a concern with the zoning of the RH to RF. The development type and density, it says that it's, the development type and density is complementary to the surrounding single-family neighborhood. It's completely inaccurate. The developers have already stated at one of the open houses, the maximum house size they're going to put on is 6,670 square feet house on a 6,000-square-foot lot, which they've already asked, they've now asked you for variances for, to decrease that lot size even further on 10, uh, seven of the lots. One of the lots, they've asked a variance to decrease the length of the lot from 90 feet to 64 feet. That's a lot different than what is in the neighborhood currently. There is a statement also in the proposal that the style range is not restricted. I know that they've asked for a $5,000 compliance deposit to conform to the proposal, but how will the bond be enforced to maintain the style of the neighborhood? I was wondering that, if the proposal indicates itself that the style is not restrictive. There are several neighborhoods around Laurent, Amber Green, Bridlewood, Huntington. This development is not consistent with anything surrounding it at all. The lots are just smaller, the houses are bigger. As I said, I grew up in the area. I've seen changes over the 40 years, and I'm concerned that this development will be setting a precedent for the City of Surrey to be allowing less than RF lots in Ocean Park. It's just not consistent with sustainable development, as it says in there, and it's not consistent lot size for the area. I'll speak about the variances. It goes back to precedent. As the previous speaker said, they've asked for variances, 10 variances on seven properties. And again, my suggestion would follow my neighbors to ask for fewer lots. None of these variances were proposed during any of the open houses that the developer hosted. Then I will speak to the connection of Laurent Drive to 20th Avenue. I sent a petition in with 61 signatures submitted to the city clerk and to city council, and I didn't receive a response on that. I have another petition that I submitted today, a new petition with 50 signatures from families that go to the school of Laurent, asking for the road not to go through. The citations on it are strictly to do with safety. Per the developer, the construction entrance is going to be off 20th Avenue, so it makes sense to flip it, have the whole development come off 20th Avenue and not bring in all that extra traffic into front of Laurent Elementary. Laurent Elementary, it's an elementary school with just over 400 students, from kindergarten to grade seven. It's a single-track French immersion school, and therefore it is a commuter school. It's very lucky to be set on a quiet, the fronting a quiet no-through road that citizens can safely cross without a crossing guard in front of the school on the north side. We've had zero incidents of pedestrians being hit by a vehicle. Opening the roadway is a huge safety concern. This will introduce two-way traffic flowing in front of the school. Yes, we have two-way traffic right now, but it's typically parents who drop off or park, or typically parents who park, walk their child to school, school starts, and then the parents go into the cul-de-sac, turn around, and exit. So it's not your typical two-way traffic in front of a school. It's a safe place for young pedestrians and vehicles. I would like to note that Amber Green Drive does have through-way traffic for parents to drop off students, which causes headaches and uproar with those local residents living south of the school. In addition, they do require a crossing guard at that location. Brings my concerns, like, if you're going to open it up on the other side, we're going to have the same problems that Amber Green has. It's noted that Amber Green residents circulated a petition throughout their neighborhood asking, or who are all outside of the 100-meter radius of influence of this project. They were asking in part that Laurent Drive connect to 20th Avenue and expand the school parking lot. The petition indicated that if Laurent Drive connects to 20th Avenue, parents would then drop off in front of the school. This is an inaccurate statement and misleading to the people who signed the survey. Each classroom at Laurent Elementary, I can put up the drawing if you like of the school, each classroom at the elementary school has an exterior door. All classes are brought in and enter and exit from their exterior door. Therefore, seven of the classrooms front Amber Green Drive. In addition, three other classrooms are closer to Amber Green than they are to the Laurent Drive frontage. Therefore, it will continue to happen that those students' closest pickup point for those seven classrooms, potentially all 10, because I know most of the kids on the other three also go up to Amber Green, they will continue to be on Amber Green and not Laurent Drive. So my point would be that those petition signers of the 41 may be signing under a bit of a mislead. The developer offered Laurent Drive a parking lot on the City of Surrey green space for the school. They offered that to us prior to talking to the City of Surrey, and I really pretty want to say thank you to the City of Surrey for not giving it to them and not paving over the green space. There are several mature trees on that green space. And I'd also like to point out, without not having it a through row, through road, three times we've been able to catch people vandalizing the school or vandalizing the property on the school with calling the police and being able to report the description of the car as the cars turn around, and the police have stopped right in front of my house and caught the perpetrators. That wouldn't happen if it was a through road. And then I will also point out about the suites, it was never mentioned in either of the open houses. I directly asked the developer, they've refused to answer whether there'd be suites. I tried to point out to them at the open house, where are the tenants going to park? With the limited setbacks on the frontage, there are few places for additional parking. With the addition of a suite, you're going to, we're going to have people parking on the street. You see it in all the other new developments that have been happening in South Surrey. And the currently proposed roadway is only 17 meters. I've noticed through all the other proposals, the roadways are at 20 meters in width. I just don't see, we're going to have the same problem that another previous proposal talked about, about cars being parked on both sides, and you're not going to be able to get in and out of that area. The proposal also doesn't indicate any additional management for the additional living spaces created by the suites, or as well as the school survey. It's talking about 10 extra elementary school children coming into the neighborhood and five high schoolers, and that's out of potentially 40 living dwellings. I just don't see where they're coming up with the numbers. And that's in Appendix 4. And then the other things were about the trees. Again, it's been spoken before. There are 314 existing trees on there, plus also 31 alders that they're going to take out and give you the 84 replacement trees. I think that more trees could be maintained or retained if the lot sizes were increased. So the significant, other points were significant changes to the proposal included the setback variances, which were never shown at the open houses. The suites was never discussed, and the enhancement interface about the trees had decreased. They had talked about saving more trees, and now they're not. The developer has also not responded to inquiries. I emailed the developer right away in October. ICC'd mayor and council, I never received a response, and I asked for, to deal with the roadway and to deal with the safety issues around Laurent Elementary. I left a message with Doris Ho, and I never received a response. The development has, proposal has changed without consultation of the neighbors, whose local community will be directly affected. The current proposal, which we just found on the City of Surrey website, has never been presented to the local neighbors where they, with the variances. The lot sizes, the floor area ratio, the tree removal are just not in keeping with our neighborhood at all. And in addition, there's no guarantee that these houses will even be lived in. They appear to be designed as an investment opportunity for the developer, maybe not a community. And also, how are they going to ensure that they're going to be built in a timely manner? There's another house on 20th Avenue, three years it's been being built with an empty lot beside it. And then you were asking about the $150,000. It's on page six. The applicant is also voluntary, voluntarily committing a separate contribution of $150,000 to Laurent Elementary, intended for future improvements for onsite safety. The school district 36 wasn't aware of the offer as of April 18th, because he came to our PAC meeting and just basically said, this is what we're going to do. And the principal turned to him and said, have you talked to the superintendent? Have you offered this to anybody? Have you gone through the proper channels? And they have not. And I think that some of the traffic concerns will be abated by not having the development enter and exit off of Laurent Drive. The developer also initially expressed that they would be the sole builders. That's what they said at the first open house. They first proposed 16 lots. We will be the sole builders of the whole thing and be able to retain community and design. And then the next open house, he said, oh, maybe we're going to do two. The proposal states that they intend to build all the homes, but I would ask if you could find a way to either ask them to somehow keep it similar or in keeping with the neighborhood or... I don't have all the words because I don't, I'm not in development, and I don't know what it's, what it would be called, but... So in summary, I would express my concerns about the suites, about having the road go through and the safety at the school, the lot size versus the house size. There aren't on Laurent Drive 6,670 square foot houses on a little lot. And then I agree with what the Amber Green resident had brought up about the covenants. It would be wonderful if there, something like that could be put in place for this development and keep our neighborhood consistent. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much for your comments. I did.
Good evening. My name's Andy Neveson. I live at 1931 Laurent Drive, which is just west of the proposed development. And we have submitted a letter or petition to council and to the planning department with our concerns with respect to the road going through. If you can put that underneath the projector, I can just explain a little bit here.
Put that up, Mr. Engineer.
So, maybe I'll start with respect to the concerns from the Amber Green side, because as some of you might be aware now, Laurent is a commuter school. So we do have a lot of traffic coming in both sides. Everyone drops off their kids. It's just the way it is, right? So what we're, right now, what we're looking at is, it's manageable. We don't really like it, but it's manageable. But we feel that if you're putting the road through, it's actually just going to increase the amount of traffic. It's not going to reduce the amount of children that have to come to the school every day by car. So it's going to increase the amount of traffic. On top of that, we're going to have the people coming in and out of the cul-de-sac onto Laurent Drive, compounding the traffic, and then we'll have the morning rush hour traffic going all the way up, up to 20th Avenue. Now, I also understand part of the city's plan is to have increased granularity on the traffic grid, which does make sense. There are some places that are pretty bad in the city. But in this case, there's a road 150 meters to the east, Amber Green, which goes between 16th and 20th, and there's another road, 150 meters to the west, 131st Street, that also goes between 16th and 20th. So there's no real need for additional connectivity between 16th and 20th. I mean, it's just not there. On top of that, the only people that currently today don't have connectivity are the people that are highlighted in yellow on the map here. Well, they're all the people that signed the letter that don't want the road to go through. So we don't want the road going through, and it's going to fundamentally change our part of the neighborhood, because we all moved into nice, quiet cul-de-sacs, right? And now we're going to have a road going through, traffic calming, whatever, it's still, the traffic's still there, right? And in addition to that, I'd also like to point out that if the City of Surrey had actually thought that the road was an important thing to have go through, when they initially developed the properties to the west, they should have put the road through then, right? They could have done it then, and no one would, wouldn't have changed anyone's lives. When they developed the property, everyone would have known the road's going through. So now, it's many, many years later that to support a proposal, a development proposal that the local residents aren't very keen on, except for friends to the east on Amber Green, because they're going to alleviate, they believe that they're going to alleviate their traffic issues, which I don't think is the case, as Tanya pointed out. So now we have a situation where our area is going to be fundamentally changed forever, and it's not going to improve safety, because it will be more traffic, and it, there's just no upside for it, for us. I mean, for the developer and what we're asking, specifically what we're asking here is how come there can't be an alternative proposal? Because I can't see how, if you're going to develop a piece of property, there's only one way to do it, and only one way to do it. And that's all we've seen from the beginning. The two public meetings, and then now in this council meeting, we've asked the developer repeatedly, can you not come up with an alternative proposal? I mean, it can't be that difficult, right? So sit down, figure out the lots, there's some concerns about the lot size, too. So it would seem that an alternative could be presented, which might make the residents a lot more happy. I mean, we're, you know, we're citizens of Surrey, we're taxpayers, we're good people in our community, and we don't really think that this is the way that development should go through. And that's basically what my tea sense on that. But I did represent all the people there that are yellow on the map. We will be impacted. We will be impacted. It doesn't go without any impact to us, okay?
Yes. Good job. Thank you very much for your comments. And I have Ian Ferguson up next.
Excuse me. Just one question, sorry.
No problem.
Madam Mayor. I'm just not familiar with the process here. So we're coming, and there's presentations, and everyone's listening to the different presentations for and against, but where's the next step to say it's approved or not approved? Because I don't, I just don't know the process, that's all.
The process is, we'll hear from everyone this evening, and then we'll make a decision whether or not to move it forward with a third reading. And sometimes that comes with restrictions before final, sometimes it doesn't. Or we'll choose to send it back based on what we've heard this evening, or it'll be simply outright denied. So there are many options, but you'll know what that is before the evening is out, I expect.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you. Ian Ferguson?
Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Council. My name is Ian Ferguson. I live at 1895 Laurent Drive, which is directly opposite the elementary school. I'm very conscious of the time, and the, many of the positions that I was going to talk to have been very adequately covered by the three previous speakers, but I just wanted to come up and say that I do oppose this proposal as it stands here, and I just, one or two short points that I'd like to make. This is the first time I've been involved in any local development that impacted the area, and I've been appalled at the information sharing process. It's been non-existent, very flawed. There were two meetings in June and October with the developer, as he presented his original plans, these, the concept plans, and it was very much a love-in and market sell at that point. He was going to work wonders for the area and everyone concerned. I wrote a response to the proposals in October and heard nothing, nothing at all. Heard nothing any time since. In fact, I didn't receive official notification of this meeting tonight, as many of my neighbors did, luckily. They'd all posted notices, and I found one. And likewise, we came upon the report itself on your website. They'd all posted notices and I found one. And likewise, we came upon the report itself on your website just three days ago. So it's been a very short time reading through it and gaining some understanding of what's going on. Thing that really is upsetting is all the variation, the variance from the initial concept proposals. 20 houses in the developed now rather than 16 as was initially. Much smaller lot sizes, much larger houses crammed onto them. And all 20 homes built with suites. First thing you heard was a tucked away notice stuck in this report here. No mention of that ever before. And where are all the cars going to be going from those suites, as someone said earlier? The construction lot results in a huge loss of trees, you know? Likewise, I was very pleased, the lady speaking earlier on several of the proposals about the green belt. We're losing green belt right, left and center in Surrey. It's tragic to see. The Sun put a wonderful picture up of Surrey back in the 90s, Surrey now on the peninsula. And it's horrifying, the amount of trees we've lost. 314 trees on that site, of which 280 are going. They're retaining 34. Yeah, okay. Proposed replacement 50 trees and a contribution of fine, whatever you like, of 62,000. You know, it doesn't pay for all that loss of all those trees. Houses in character with the neighborhood. That was very much the talk in June and October. These houses are not in character with the neighborhood, either to the west or the east. They're... The size of the lots and the footprint of those houses, you know, are totally out of character with what's on either side. The ratios are totally wrong, as one of our speakers said earlier. And how do you get over that? The only way I see is he's got to cut the density of the houses unless you're going to give him the setbacks that he's asking for. And quite honestly, if you're, if you're looking for maintaining equality of character throughout the area, he shouldn't be getting those setbacks. He should be cutting back on the density of houses in that given area.
Thank you.
And in the process...
Please.
And in the process...
Sorry, Sir Ian.
Sorry?
No, I'm sorry. I just didn't hear you. Yeah. Go ahead.
Sorry. What, what I said is that he should be cutting back on the density of houses in that given area and hopefully at the same time, saving a few more trees. I strongly agree with the previous speaker in terms of disagreeing with opening up LaRonde Avenue to 20th, 20th Avenue, LaRonde Drive to 20th Avenue. I see the children coming to school every day. I've got two grandchildren there at the moment at LaRonde. And the cars come in the morning, they park there. They're there for maybe half an hour, 40 minutes. And they go, several go up, turn around and park on the road going down towards 16th. Others park on the road going up, others go through the school. It works in a relatively efficient manner every morning and every evening. Putting the road through to 20th will certainly increase the traffic flow on that road at all times of the day and will almost certainly cause many more problems at both drop-off time and pickup time for the children and also for any special occasions at, at the school. So I'm very much against that, that going through. Yes, the, the last one was really a question, as Tanya referred to it as well. Concerns regarding the, the building development. The developer said he was going to develop all 20 houses. And I think it says that in the report as well. Once hearing rumors that that may not be the case, I'd like to know if it is because it's going to have all sorts of implications on terms of the number, the amount of traffic coming to that site from a multiplicity of builders over goodness knows what sort of extended period. And, you know, that's something, you know, I think the residents should really be made aware of and can express an opinion on because it's going to make a difference to the time it takes to, to do the development. That's all I want to say, other than to say definitely a propose, the proposal's being asked for in here and also the, the road going through to 20th, 20th Avenue. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thanks, Mr. Ferguson, for your comment.
Madam Mayor, I, I wasn't going to speak tonight, but I've heard so much that makes me want to speak. So I'll be quick. I'm, Gary Niven, I live at 1899 LaRonde Drive. I've been there 25 years. When LaRonde originally released that land to build the houses, we bought new then, so 25 years ago. And, or 20 years ago, sorry. And we've seen a lot of change. The one concern I had that the builders did not want to even entertain was the LaRonde property is actually two civic addresses. And that my bone would be that they should develop the lots based on an in and out on cul-de-sacs on that particular piece of property they have. Now, maybe that doesn't give them the density, but it does give more continuity to of the other houses that are already there for 20 years. And so that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much, Mr. Niven, for your comments. Ken, please.
Ken Rowan, 1999, Amble Green Drive. Madam Mayor Hepner, members of the council. My home shares a common border with LaRonde Woods. My, the back of my home backs onto the LaRonde Woods development. And I know that council's got many larger issues to deal with tonight than the one that I'm going to bring up. I mean, you're looking at roads and access, you're looking at lot sizes, number of homes, et cetera. What I'm concerned about is what I call the, the aesthetic of, of the old versus the new. And in particular, what I'm thinking of is the developer has proposed what he calls an enhanced interface along the eastern border of the LaRonde Woods property, three and a half meters wide. And I think the idea is that there should be some kind of a space that divides the properties from each other, the old from the new, and provides perhaps for a treat area, a green space, and increases the privacy between the back of the homes on Amble Green, such as mine, and the new developments that are going to be otherwise looking straight into the, the backyards of these properties. And I, I just wanted to emphasize that I, I feel very strongly that that enhanced interface, as it's called, that three and a half meter green space is a very important part of this project from my perspective. And I think a restrictive covenant should be on the title of these various properties that are, that actually own part of that eastern border of the LaRonde Woods property. A restrictive covenant so that we don't find that this, this three and a half meters of green space is suddenly a basketball court or a, a parking spot where they're going to put their Class A motorhome or, or some kind of a shed or something like that. It also allows that there's three and a half meters of space, I mean, it's going to be trees and I would hope some, some shrubs or, or some cedar plants of some considerable height that would improve the, basically provide a curtain or a shield or break the, break down the, the sightlines, Madam Mayor. Visually, all the homes of Amble Green Drive were built about 30 years ago in Amble Green. And each home is unique. Most are two-story, none have basements. And we have to think about the sightlines for these older homes. And it would be aesthetically correct to separate the older Amble Green properties from the new LaRonde Woods properties, using both the green space as well as trees of considerable height. So I'm, I'm not opposed to the project. I see the, I see the development of this property as a natural progression of this property. It's just the question is, as I said, the larger issues that you're facing in terms of the street access and the lot sizes, et cetera. But I just wanted to emphasize that a restrictive covenant for that, that green space is important to me, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Thank you very much for your comments, Mr. Rowan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, councilors. As you know, my name is Maggie Koka. I work with Aplin and Martin and I am the agent for the application. I just wanted to take a few minutes of your time this evening to go through the particulars of the project and to actually respond to a few of the comments that we've heard here this evening. I've got a few maps that will help sort of the discussion go along. So the first map was an exercise to see how this application fit with the surrounding area. As you know, there's LaRonde Elementary School there. There is the road alignment that came up and feeds those two smaller cul-de-sacs, 19A on the north. And looking specifically at the lot sizes. And so the application has lots ranging between 560 to about 900 square meters. And then looking to see what else sort of fell within that range. And that's what this color coding presents. We then looked at lots between 900 and 1,300 square meters to see where they were within the neighborhood and then those that were greater. You can see that there is a progression that happens in this neighborhood that starts sort of down at 16th and 128th, which is where the commercial node is, and works its way up into the larger suburban lots. And that this sort of works with that transition that's in the neighborhood. There was a statement this evening with regards to this proposal changing substantially throughout the open houses that were held. This, there was mention of a 16 lot subdivision. I'm not familiar with a presentation that involved a 16 lot subdivision. It was always a 20 lot subdivision that was presented. It was always presented as an RF subdivision. Moving on to the second map, which will show a closer look of the actual application. We worked extensively with Arboretum, who is an arborist quite familiar with the city's bylaws and requirements. And the residents are, are very correct. You can see that the LaRonde Elementary School immediately to the south has a large forested area. And that forest did progress up through this actual site. There is substantial trees. Unfortunately, many of the trees on the site were unsuitable for retention, either to structural shape and structure or for disease reasons. And so of those trees, 136 or 43% of the trees simply weren't suitable, which left marginal trees and suitable trees. Marginal trees are trees that have grown up within a tree stand and have a co-dependence that comes into play. And so of the suitable trees, the big trees that are able to be retained, they've grown in an open canopy, they're able to stand on their own, we're actually retaining 35% of those. And those are illustrated on this map. In addition to that, there is 20-plus trees that meet the typical replacement size, which are small trees, absolutely. They're eight inches in diameter when they're actually planted. But the developer is also committed to put in 12-inch trees, which require large machinery spades to come in to be able to place them. And the gentleman before me actually spoke of that enhanced piece there. And you can see that a lot of the retreat, retreat, sorry, retained trees as well as the enhanced trees or the larger mature trees have been specifically placed there. There was also discussion about restrictive covenants. All trees that are retained on the site would have a restrictive covenant to ensure that they could not be removed. And I'm sure when the developer has his opportunity to speak this evening, he'll further strengthen that and say that the trees that are mature trees being planted on the site could also further be protected through a restrictive covenant. Just going over some of the other comments that were made this evening. Road width. LaRonde Drive currently at the full dedication is 20 meters. This proposal continues that 20 meters up to 20th Avenue. The only change from that would be the extension of 19A. On the west side, it's currently 16.5 meters wide. We're being asked to do 17 meters to meet the current city's bylaw. That day is being provided here. There was comments with regards to variances. There's no variances here other than for tree protection. There's none with regards to the size of the lots. There's none with regards to the depths of the lots. What is being proposed from a variance perspective is those lots that have trees, there are some relaxations in the front yard setback to ensure that there's more room in the backyards to protect the trees that are already growing there. The relaxation still allow double car garages, which allow a driveway which fits two cars, and they both can fit into that. If a lot was unable to provide the parking requirement for a suite as per the city bylaw, a suite wouldn't be permitted on those lots. So you can see that some of those lots that have variances because of the existing tree growth in the area, when they get into the details, are unlikely to be able to meet the bylaw and therefore couldn't have those suites. There was some discussion about how this application has changed since what was presented at the open house. There's, the last open house was in October of last year and it was a 20 lot subdivision. The only change that's happened is the three lots near 20th Avenue that front onto LaRonde Drive, the orientation changed. Instead of having two lots that, or having five lots in total fronting on 20th Avenue, you see that there's three and then there's three that front onto LaRonde. That was in response to some discussions with staff. It didn't change the density, it didn't change the number of lots. The last map that we have that we would like to show you this evening is just a summary from our October open house. All this is, is an illustration of what we've received as comments. Those comments were received either, they were all received in written form. They either were given to us at the night of the open house or were emailed into us afterwards. You can see that the green dots as well as the blue dots indicated some favor, in favor of the application. The blue dots indicate that they had conditions, they had concerns, and so we wanted to illustrate the difference in that percentage. But overall, there was about 75 that we received. With regards to opposition, there was 22 that we could actually map where we knew their, knew their addresses and four in which we had received but didn't know where they lived. And so we've added that up, so there's a full total of 26. Those are the comments I have for you this evening, unless there's some questions from council.
There are some questions. Counselor Gill.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Maggie, I just wanted to get the context. I know that the report indicated that there were some community benefits paid by the developer. Just want to understand what that figure was for. I think there is a 70,000, 150,000 and so some context in terms of sidewalks.
Yes. As part of this application, the developer will be constructing sidewalks beyond their frontage. And so there will be sidewalk improvements along 20th Avenue between 131 and Amble Green Drive, as well as extending the sidewalk from the south side of the application down to the front of the school. There is also traffic calming being proposed in the form of speed bumps along, basically just before the school on LaRonde, down near 131, and then another one up at around 19A.
And just in terms of the 150,000, I'm not quite sure how that fits in the picture.
Yeah, so through this process, and the developer may be able to give better clarity to this, but he said there's always been a commitment to work with the school district to address traffic safety for children in the area. I went and witnessed it very early in this process, and although they may consider the traffic flow in this area regular, there's double parking, there's U-turns in the middle of the street, there's kids crossing in non-marked crosswalks.
I'm just trying to better understand whose discretion would those funds be used for? Would it be the city's discretion, the school's discretion, the PAC's?
It was a combination of the PAC and the school district.
Fair enough, thank you.
Councilor Villanueva?
Just two or three questions. I'm trying to understand that if there was another layout, why total access couldn't be from Twentieth Avenue? Why we need to go through Amble Green to? I'm asking you if you looked at that kind of layout, because that would make more sense to me, like just from a strategic point of view, but also is that not feasible and why?
Certainly. I think I heard all of your question, I'm not sure that I captured all of it. I think the question was with regards to if there was an alternative, why is it is Laurent connecting to Twentieth Avenue? Does that capture it generally?
No, I guess why can't the entire subdivision be accessed from Twentieth Avenue? Why do we have to access this subdivision through Amble Green?
This, yeah, this, yeah, through Laurent.
Yes.
Laurent Drive, of course, comes to the southern edge of this application, at which point Laurent is reduced to a half-road standard. As part of the city's standards, that road would need to be built to its full form, as well as there is an existing right-of-way that connected pedestrians all the way up to Twentieth Avenue. So the existing road layout was that this road would come up and connect so that it aligned with 131B Street on the north side of Twentieth Avenue. You can see it in the subdivision layout, as well as the discussions we would have had with city engineering on the road preferences in the area. Maybe I didn't understand it because I couldn't quite hear it.
I guess my question is, could you do this subdivision by having total access off of Twentieth Avenue and not having to run the traffic through existing homes?
So not having Laurent connect through? So have everything just come off of Twentieth and have it in cul-de-sac form?
That's right.
Please.
So I'm just, I'm just asking if that's a possibility, that's what the neighborhood was suggesting, and I'm just asking you if there is that possibility?
If there was, so that there would not be the connection from Nineteen A to Twentieth Avenue?
That's right.
It would be possible, but as we understood through the discussions of transportation safety and the expectation of where this road was always anticipated to be, this was the connection that we were put to us with regards to how this neighbor should see the completion of that road.
Okay. My second question then would be regarding house size.
Yes.
My understanding was from a presentation that these houses were going to be actually 3,000 square feet. That's what I was told. So I'm really confused about the 6,000 square feet that the neighborhood appears to think is going to be built on those lots. So either I received incorrect information when I asked that question, people proposing this application, or I need clarification on that.
Certainly. The application is for a standard RF lot, and so it would meet the expectations of the existing zoning. The zoning does allow for a maximum, and I'm sorry, I'd have to ask what the maximum is within the zoning, I can't remember it specifically off the top of my head. And then there is the provision of a basement. And so I'm not sure where people get 6,000 square feet.
I was actually told that, you know, a normal house on these lots would be about 3,500 square feet, and the developer was proposing to build houses so they would fit with the character of the neighborhood of just 3,000 square feet. So the discussion tonight has me concerned about the information that was provided to me and what the neighborhood understands and what I don't understand now.
Right. And so the houses that are proposed here as per the bylaw, 3,500 square feet is allowed under the bylaw?
I understand that.
And a basement, plus the basement.
So 3,500 square feet plus a basement, that could be how many square feet?
The basement would generally be half of that 3,500.
So the total amount of the house would be 3,500 square feet, including the basement suite?
No. No?
Five thousand? I just, I just want information correct. I was confused after a presentation on the size of the house today, well, what I'm hearing tonight. So I'm just calling you on that, I guess, I'll be honest about it.
Okay.
Thanks.
Councilor Gill?
Madam Mayor, Maggie, I forgot to ask you, did you guys have a traffic study completed in relation to this particular project?
There is a traffic consultant that was retained as part of this project, an actual study that was identified by staff and a terms of reference that would have been put forth. That was not completed, but the traffic consultant was part of the process throughout.
Do you have a high-level summary of what was concluded?
We do have the traffic consultant here if you wish to speak with him.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll get him later. I see no other questions, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak? Otherwise, I'll call the traffic consultant and the, oh, okay, no, you didn't sign up. Over here, wishing to speak?
I would just like to.
Sure.
Good evening. I would just like to submit some petitions in opposition to the proposal as it is now from the neighborhood. Thank you.
Motion to receive?
So moved.
Secondary, all those in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I saw a hand here, yes, sir.
Thanks very much. Good evening, or I guess it's not good morning yet, but we're getting close. Just, I wasn't planning on speaking this evening, but a voice that hasn't been heard. I live on 131st Street. As has been mentioned, Laurent Elementary is a destination school, and our street has to bear an excessive traffic burden as a result. It's disproportionate to this surrounding neighborhood. And we have assurances from the city copied to the mayor and council, excuse me, going back to 2009, suggesting that if this development were to go, ever go through this area, that Laurent Drive would be extended out to Twentieth Avenue. So for myself and my fellow residents on that street and in those cul-de-sacs, you can see Nineteen, Nineteen A, we're pleased to see that that promise has been followed through. Because it, you know, if anyone wants to stand on those streets at 8:30 in the morning and 3 o'clock in the afternoon, I've installed a gate on my front yard for my children because of the traffic danger. There's numerous people, unfortunately, they're not here today to speak to it, but they feel the same way. So there is a, there is a strong voice that applauds the fact that Laurent Drive is being extended as part of this proposal. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Madam Clerk, can you, can we get your name, sir, for the record? I'm sorry.
Craig Mann, 1924, 131st Street.
Thank you very much. Who else got their hand up to speak to this particular application? Okay, you, sir. Three more. Okay.
My name is George Forgawa. I live on 1925, 131st. I think there's been a lot said about what's happening, and we are missing the point about traffic and the kids. There was saying that people drive through to Laurent Drive, somehow they manage to turn around. Well, let me tell you how they do turn around. They U-turn, they go on driveways and they back up. They, there's kids walking all over the place. It's not safe. The safest way for this thing to happen is for the kids, all the cars going one way, coming from Laurent South to going Laurent North. There should be no U-turns, there should be no turning around, none of that stuff, because that's what's going to get us in trouble. The other issue is that this is a destination school. Most of the kids get driven there. There is very little, from what I notice, very little kids being dropped off on the other side of the school. 150-foot frontage, there is no stopping sign, never mind no parking signs, there's no stopping signs. Most of the school is coming through the north side, Laurent Drive, and the traffic in there during those times is horrendous. People going down 131st, it's a 50-kilometer zone, and 85 percentile before the French immersion was really running in 2009 was 58 kilometers an hour, 1,470 cars a day. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your comments. I have to pick. You, sir, and then you at the back in the red. And, yeah, okay.
My name's Greg Wilson. I live at 1783 Amble Green Drive. You have to punch the road through to Twentieth. Kids are gonna get run over on Amble Green Drive. There's more and more and more cars coming every year. And it's, we don't have the roadway, we don't have sidewalks, we don't have curbs. Now, you look in this picture here, Amble Green, look at those great big lots. Look at Laurent, the lots are smaller. Things change. You have to make some changes. This is what they're doing. We think it's good faith that these people are doing this development. Everybody can pencil in and do this and do that. One of these days, some kids gonna get hit on Amble Green Drive. We've had two dogs hit, one died, one made it. We had an ambulance situation this year where they couldn't get up to the street because of everybody dropping their kids off. So you want to have a destination school, have access so people can get to the school. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Got him, and then you in the back, and then, oh, wow. More hands going up.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. My name's Perry Petronius. I live at 1867 Amble Green Drive. I'm the resident there and the owner. I've lived there 16 and a half years. I know I've lived there 16 and a half years because my dog Arrow is 16 and a half years old. Anybody know Arrow here? Now, I do oppose the change of land use for this development. I do understand that there is a bylaw that will allow the developer five units per acre under a suburban land use. And I would like some confirmation from somebody here in planning. Are they aware of such a bylaw? I understand it's being used in North Surrey.
Mr. Planner, this is an RA designation and going to an RF, but I think the gentleman is asking what would a suburban bylaw?
There is a bylaw that allows five units per acre using, under suburban land use.
Madam Mayor, the designation, the current designation of the property being suburban currently allows a unit density of two units per acre.
Two?
Yes. But is there a bylaw that allows suburban densities of five units per acre in the city of Surrey?
Madam Mayor, I think the delegation's referring to exception areas, areas where under the official community plan, the suburban designation does allow up to a four-unit per acre density. Much of the South Surrey is in an exception area which limits it to two units per acre. I do need to confirm whether this is an exception area, if you'll give me a moment?
Perhaps you could just get to the point of what, of what you're making relative to that?
Yes, well, I don't believe the land use change.
You're in an exception area.
Yes, the land use change from suburban to urban is a red herring to give them the higher lot coverages. Now, I'm an engineer, so I'm not mincing words. They have an opportunity to use a bylaw, an existing bylaw that, under suburban land use, that gives them five units per acre, but they have not chosen to do that.
Yeah.
Now, I'm opposed to the change of land use because this bylaw is in existence and it is available to them. Now, I'm going to move on to the next item. I'm also opposed, I'm also a father of two children that attend Laurent Elementary School, and I'm opposed to connecting Laurent Drive to Twentieth Avenue. Nothing, absolutely nothing strikes more terror in my heart than the hundreds and hundreds of more vehicles that will be passing by Laurent Elementary. During school hours, this is going to happen during school hours, there'll be hundreds of transient vehicles. People will know that the Laurent School is an unsecured site, and we will have problems. Within two months ago, less than two months ago, the RCMP locked down Amble Green Drive, the whole park, at night because there was a sexual predator that attacked a woman. All the women, including my wife, were ordered off the streets. You can check with the RCMP on that one, it was about two months ago. It was in the evening. They had Laurent, they had, excuse me, they had Amble Green Drive blocked off at Twentieth, at Sixteenth, and in, and along Amblewood Drive. And we're patrolling. They were talking about calling in dogs. It's just a matter of time. If you punch through to Twentieth Avenue, all the child predators in the province will know that they'll be able to pass by Laurent Drive and make a quick exit onto Twentieth Avenue. I urge you, for the safety of the children that are going to Laurent Drive, do not open Laurent Drive to Twentieth Avenue. The predators have discovered our neighborhood, it's a fact. As per the current development, the development disrespects the character of the surrounding neighborhoods. Huntington to the north is half-acre gross density. Amble Green to the right is under a land use contract that has an underlying density, which maybe the planning can tell me what that might be. What is the underlying density for Laurent, for, I'm sorry, for Amble Green Drive?
It looks to be RA, residential acreage.
Yes, it's RA, but the lot sizes are not acreage sizes, they're less than acreage. The, the lots to the, to the, to the west, the Laurent Drive lots, they're RF, but they're large lots with large houses. The developer has asked for variances. From what I understand, and I understand the developer is telling us something different tonight, the only reason to ask for a variance is because they can't fit the house on a small lot. Either the lot is too small or the house is too big. The developer has to come back again and make up their mind, what they're going to do. I urge you not to approve any variances at all that will allow a larger, greater lot coverages or any setback reductions. We also have a loss of a wildlife corridor. If you look up at the map that's up there now, there's an RHG just to the north, that's the Huntington pathway. Now, we have coyotes in our neighborhood, I know where the coyotes live. And that wildlife corridor is a north-south corridor, and the coyotes come through that RA, the four-acre RA development right now, they go through the Laurent Forest, and they come up again back through Amble Green and through the green spaces. We will lose the large animals, the large wildlife. There are many, many eagles in our neighborhood now. We have constant owls in our neighborhood. And unbelievably, we have amphibians, we can hear them at night. Excuse me, I'm not as organized as I should be, I've been out with a cold the past week. The current lot density that the developer is proposing is not a suitable transitional density between a suburban density, which is Amble Green, and the urban density, which is to the west. And also... is to the west, and also suburban density to the north, which is Huntington. There's been no character study, I understand, done. Perhaps I'm wrong, but maybe you can confirm that for me. I'm also opposed to any money in lieu of trees being cut. The developer should be replacing like-for-like as per the bylaw, not just cash in lieu... There's no effort here by the bylaw to improve the habitat connectivity to support the movement of large mammals like coyotes, as I'd mentioned previously. And I do believe the higher density should be rejected by council tonight as a profit-motivated argument by the developer. Has nothing to do with creating a nice neighborhood. Now, there's no doubt, we do have a lot of traffic on Amble Green. My children walk to school, but we seem to make it every single day. The traffic is half an hour in the morning and half an hour at night. We could use traffic calming on Amble Green, there's no doubt about it. And they might be able to use some more traffic calming on Larron Drive, because there is a lot of traffic that is heading down to Safeway through 131st, people make that shortcut. If the connection to Larron Drive is made into 20th, that will become the new shortcut to Safeway for everybody north of 20th Avenue. We don't want that. We don't want people in the middle of the day while school's in, rushing down to Safeway to get their chickens, or whatever else they're buying, and putting our children in jeopardy. The children's safety at Larron Elementary is paramount. Nothing else, absolutely nothing else is more important. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that's, please, it's gonna be, it's already a long evening, it's just gonna be longer with that, please, that is, that is not customary in a council chamber. May I see a show of hands of how many more speakers we have? Okay, one, two, three, four, five. None of you were signed up, so I'm sorry, I'm just gonna have to point. You, that would work, sorry. Your name, please, and your address for the clerk.
I am Crystal Fergala. I live at 1925 131 Street. I am definitely in favor of Larron Drive going through to 20th. I have been in my house for 22 years, and that has been on the plans that whole time. So, these people have bought their homes knowing that that road eventually is going to go through. So, what is missed in all of this is that they're concerned about their children on Larron Drive here, but they're more than happy to send them back up our street on 131st, and we just cannot bear anymore of the burden. We need it to be shared. We need, we need the problem of Larron School being a destination school, it has to be shared by all of the neighbors. We are, we are overburdened as it is, and it just, it cannot continue. And there, you know, that we are on this shortcut street, and it is, it is not great, that's for sure. But, you know, but they're very happy to, for our neighborhood to be the shortcut, and not, and not, you know, they've bought near a school, it's, it's the equivalent of buying near an airport, and then getting mad when they expand the airport. Like, you're, you're in a school area, it's going to change, it's going to, things happen. But Larron Drive has always been on the books to go up to 20th Avenue. And the way I see it, I'm looking at the map here, there's far less people actually living on Larron than there are in the cul-de-sacs. There are more in those cul-de-sacs. And when you look at 131st Street, there are way more people affected by the traffic than there would be who actually live on Larron Drive. I would say about twice as many on 131st Street. We are being greatly affected by the traffic, and this is just gonna, we, we just cannot shoulder any more of the burden. It's too much. It's too much.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Speaker. Okay, sir, over here, and then you, oh, I'm sorry, and then at the back, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Uh, my name is Roger Barnes. I live on 1906 131st, uh, the shortcut street. Many of the points that will be made tonight are all valid and, um, you know, worth everybody's attention, and obviously, a lot of change is needed. What I wanna point out, though, is, as the people on 131st are talking about, is the fact that we seem to be the ones that, uh, with all the suggestions being made, will bear the burden, um, to make everyone else happy. Currently, 131 is the shortcut. South of 16th, there is considerable building taking place, and if you work off the peninsula, that street is the street that you go to get onto 20th and work your way to the freeway and off to work. It is the cut-through. And everybody who lives on the north side of 20th makes 131 the cut-through there to get down to the shopping center and all the activities that are at Ocean Park. The problem we have is that if, if the drive does not go through, there is going to be approximately the 19 existing houses that are already on there, and there's also going to be at least 15 to 17 that are going to, uh, come down the route in front of the school. Well, we've already talked and heard that typically, every house has two cars. The new houses will have two cars, and if they've got suites, they've got another car in there. So, if you do the math on it, uh, and you figure that people leave their house twice a day, not unreasonable, even more than that, uh, that's in and out, in and out. Well, that happens to be close to about 320 trips from that area that won't connect through to 20th Avenue, coming past the school just from the residence. So, if you don't think that causes a little bit of concern, the residents alone are the traffic problem, 320 trips going past the school. And where do they turn? If they're not going to the shopping center, they turn up 131, and we'll get the bulk of the 300, which is 2,100 a week. Thank you very much, just out of that little area. So, perhaps, rather than arguing about whether the street should go through or shouldn't go through, or where we can put speed bumps and all that kind of stuff, maybe this project, as one of the counselors or planner mentioned, maybe it should just be exited onto 20th, the whole subdivision. And forget all this crap. We can argue here nine days, but all I can tell you is that there is nothing but traffic issues if that, uh, road does not go through. For us, for them, complaints, child safety, you, you name it. The subdivision should exit onto 20th and forget it all. Thank you very much.
Thank you. At the back, I'm sorry, I think I've pointed you a few times.
Hi there.
Good evening.
Thank you for hearing me in, everybody is so late. Um, so my name's Michelle Harrison, I live at 13125 19th Avenue, and I really appreciate everybody that's spoken on 131st, everybody from Amble Green, Larron Drive. We should probably share the burden, if that's what we need to compromise on, and make 131 and Larron Drive a one-way. That way, anybody who's coming from 20th to drop off their kids goes off of 131 and then does the loop. And then that way, we know where the traffic is coming from, in what direction, and we all know that, that, well, we all know, there's another development south of 16th, and there are another 50 homes with suites that are going to be trying to get to Vancouver, to the, to 140th, to get to Crescent Road, to get on the 99, and they're going to be coming through our neighborhood. And the problem that I have, and I can really appreciate the people that live on 131, because I see the traffic, I, I have a child that goes to Larron, she's five, and I've gotta hold her hand every day, there is a ton of traffic. And the problem that I have is, if we do it the one-way, from 20th, south on 131, and then up north, that way, nobody's taking the shortcut, 'cause I appreciate the shortcut, to go past the school really fast on the weekends, like, forget during school hours, 'cause everybody in this room, and people that are, go to that school, is very respectful about driving that very slow zone around school, around school time, but also, um, with, you know, on the weekends, driving slowly around our neighbors. But it's the people that don't, are, that are not our neighbors that I'm worried about just skirting through. We need to put traffic calming on 131, on Larron Drive, and Amble Green. Amble Green doesn't have sidewalks, for heaven's sakes. So, we need to do something on these three roads to make sure a child doesn't get hit, period. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. You, gentlemen?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and councilors. My name is Keith Groot, and I live at 1883 Larron Drive. I live directly across from the school. A common theme tonight appears to be an issue around the school. The school is a destination school. That is a big issue. It is not a community, it is...
Too large.
The, the community element of the school has been taken away from us because it is a French immersion school. I'm not proposing that the community doesn't benefit from having a French immersion school, but when you look at it from a connectivity perspective, the developer has stated connectivity, connectivity. Well, all this connectivity is primarily benefiting those that are outside the community, transporting their children to a destination school. If you look at the connectivity between 140th and 128th, between 16th and 20th, you have 140th, you have 136, you have Amble Green Drive, you have 131. There is a lot of connectivity between 20th and 16th. Now, if you take the same corridor between 140th and 128th, between 20th and 24th, how much connectivity is there between there? There is an Eddie. Period. You can't, my, my children went to Elgin, there was no connectivity to go to Elgin, but there was a wonderful pathway, green space, that they could take to school every single day. My children also attended, uh, Larron School, and when they attended Larron School, it wasn't a designated French immersion school, it was a shared English and French school. It worked really well. Another issue is with regard to the actual development. Now, I oppose the development as it has been proposed. I think the density of the lots is, is unrealistic, as far as it, um, pertains to the neighborhood. A question I have is, there's been a lot of talk about setbacks, front setbacks, backyard setbacks, what about side setbacks? Because when I look at the diagram that's up there, those homes look very close in proximity to, to one another. And that also affects the character of the neighborhood. If you look at the, the neighborhood as it stands right now, the homes have a fair amount of green space around them. So, when you're looking at it from the road, you see green space. In that plan, can the developer tell us how much, what are the side yards on these homes?
Uh, let's just ask the planner that, in terms of their, the, um, variations, are there any variations to the side yards? Because what I heard the agent say was that the only variations were relative to saving trees. Is that so in any of the side yards?
Uh, Madam Mayor, there are no side yard setback variances.
No side yard variances at all, so?
That's correct.
Standard side yard, uh...
1.8 meters.
1.8. So, no variance?
And that, that isn't complimentary to, I, I don't know the existing homes in the neighborhood, um, from my perspective. I'm not a developer, I'm just a person that lives in a community and wants to retain the value of the community. And I also want to press the point that we live in a community that's called Ocean Park. If it truly is a park, then let's preserve the trees. If you look at the trees along, um, 20th, there are majestic conifers, incredible trees. Those trees are probably 50 years old. There is nothing that can replace those trees. As far as the connectivity, again, with Larron, there seems to be a lot of issues, again, about to the south of the school, to the north of the school, to the east and to the west. Um, you know, when, when you're at that school, when you live across from that school, 20 to 30 minutes is the 20, is, is the timeframe that children are dropped off. It is not an issue. It's not an issue for the residents of Larron Drive. I don't know why it should be an issue for any of the other residents anywhere else. Now, as far as safety concerns, I haven't known of any safety concerns that have been presented, that I'm aware of. I don't know why we can't be a tolerant neighborhood and, and say, is it really that bad that there's 20 to 30 minutes where children are dropped off at the school? It's not a disaster. Then, we get our community back for approximately 10 weeks of the year. There's no traffic, but 20 to 30 minutes, really, people? Is that a really big issue? It's not. Anyway, sorry, I just wanted to speak.
Thank you very much for your comments, sir.
Madam Mayor and members of council, my name is Norman Porter. I'm one of the developers. I live at 18, 181, 218 Avenue, Surrey. I think, uh, I'd like to clarify some of, uh, of the comments I've heard here tonight that need clarification, um, and then wrap up. Could, uh, who has the maps that Maggie Toca brought up? There's one that shows the RF zoning, just a brown color, I'd like to see that up there. Okay. So, the premise that, that, um, how this zoning took place and how, how the, the 20 lots and the RF, uh, came about was that we did not want to change the zoning or the character of the neighborhood. And clearly, uh, Larron Drive was supposed to, at one time, go through. Whether it does or doesn't, that's, that was a directive from our, from our pre-application meetings with the city, that you'll have to build Larron Drive through. We've already got half the road right away, you're expected to give the other half and build the road. The, the RF zoning is the same as the RF zoning in the rest of the Larron neighborhood, and, and the infrastructure and the servicing for this subdivision is through the Larron Drive and Larron half of the subdivision, it's not through Amble Green, and it's not about what is north of, of, of 20th Avenue. It's clearly should be an RF zoning. Now, some of the comments, I don't know where the 6,600 square feet came from, and I think that the, the report, um, that was online, that some of the, um, um, neighbors got a hold of, um, is, is being misunderstood. It's, it's a, it's the planning report to council, done by the planning department through consultation with us and, and the city. And the, uh, the RF zone, no matter if our RF zone or the RF zone that's existing, allows suites. We have no intention of building suites, and we've never mentioned suites in any of the public information meeting, and I didn't even realize that the planning report would mention suites, but the planning report is simply saying what is allowed under RF zone. Okay? But we still have no intention of building suites, we're gonna build homes, and just to clarify, Councilor Villanueva, um, the homes are, are allowed to be 3,500 square feet under the RF zoning, approximately. The, uh, the 3,000 square feet came about... The 3,000 square feet came about when I was explaining that the variances that we've applied for are only varying front yards to allow for the saving of trees. They do not vary the house size. I've heard lots of comments that they vary to make the house size bigger. They actually vary to make the house size smaller. And so in the variance, you'll read where there is a variance, and it's written in the variance, where there is a variance, it actually comments on what the new house size would be, because we're varying the lot size, not to increase density, not to crowd backyards or side yards, but to save trees. And they come down to about 3,000 square feet on those seven varied lots. So they do the opposite of what I'm hearing other folks interpret it. So I just wanted to clarify that. I've got a lot of notes here. All of the homes, I think Maggie mentioned this too, are all side-by-side double garages. They all have driveways. But again, if we wanted a covenant that there are no suites, then we'd do that. We don't have a problem with that. There's another comment about the enhanced interface, and we are adding a bylaw tree, so that's at chest height, it's 12 inches, and we're tree spading those in. I think six or seven of them go along that enhanced interface area, and we have no problem covenanting that strip, so there are no garden sheds, not only... The trees are already covenanted not to be harmed or knocked down, but we can further covenant that we don't need garden sheds there. That's not a problem, and that's the whole idea about trying to fit into the character of the neighborhood. There was a character study done, as there always is with all zonings, and the character study was submitted to staff as part of the rezoning process. Maybe we could change to the map with the house sizes on, or the blocks of houses on. Yes, that one. We have not, we are, I was also asked to confirm that we are the builder, we are the builder for all of these houses. We have not designed any houses. This map simply illustrates that a building footprint that could be under the maximum zoning by law. So especially when you're varying a house, I think it's to illustrate that, yes, this is a house that could be built. The tree retention, Maggie explained that very well. We have saved all of the large trees, including in the middle of a cul-de-sac with the city's permission, which is very much like Amble Green. But we'll have more large majestic conifer trees than there are anywhere else in the Laurent side of the subdivision, in the RF lots. And we are further enhancing that with eight bylaw-type trees at 12 inches in diameter that we spade in. And then further, there's another 20 conifer trees being planted, and that says to be determined on the maps, because they're being planted based on the house designs, and to make sure that every yard has conifer trees. That's all about fitting into the character of this neighborhood. This neighborhood is between 20 and 23 years, I'm hearing, when people built new houses in the Laurent neighborhood, on the RF lots. And I venture to say, by the looks of the trees, all those trees are about 20 years old. It was clear cut, for the most part, when it was developed, and there are no majestic conifers there. We're actually going to start out with a subdivision that is very much in character. It's the same-sized lots. The houses maybe today might be closer to the 3,000 to 3,500 square feet. There are no suites. We're willing to covenant that there are no suites, but it'll be very much in character. The houses will be designed to likely not be, I'm building them, so I know they're not going to be contemporary houses. Right now, you'll go through the area and you'll see houses all over, it seems, being knocked down, and lots cleared, and a very flat-roofed contemporary design going in. And that's out of the character of the neighborhood. And I think the first speaker said that this subdivision, like any subdivision or any development of property in a neighborhood, will polarize the neighborhood. And I'd mentioned that before. It polarized it into trees, density, and traffic circulation, or roads. That's been obvious tonight. But I really do think density shouldn't be an issue. We're building RF in an RF neighborhood. We're not building RF 12 in an RF neighborhood. We're building RF in an RF neighborhood. We've taken a great deal of steps to make sure that it is in the same character as that neighborhood, including saving trees. And we've done a lot of work to save those trees, including being willing to shrink the size of our houses, not increase them, as I've heard today, but shrink them in order to save trees. Not saving trees and moving the house around and increasing it through variances. That's the opposite of what's going on here. So I don't want to stay up too much later tonight either. So I just wanted to make those few things very clear. And that's probably all I need to say. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Porter. You may be on deck in case we have other questions, but thank you for that right now.
Thank you.
And I think there were some other speakers at the back. Okay, Deb, and then the gentleman at the back.
Deb Jacks, Surrey Environmental Partners. In the report, pardon me, there's a comment about four trees off-site were having to be removed, but there was no notation with regards to replacement of those, nor the location of them. Don't know if that might be trees that are in the forested area that belongs to the school, or what?
Mr. Planner?
We'd have to take a look at that, but we'll look at that.
Thank you.
Okay, the other item is with regards to the notion of being a $15,000 cap on each acre with regards to the removal of trees. As you indicated before, the site overall has 314 trees, and 280 will be removed, with 34 being retained. Now, the number of trees being removed would require 529 trees, but there's only going to be 50 planted, which gives a deficit of 479 trees. The compensation ought to be at the rate of $300 per tree, $143,700. But the cash and lieu being provided is $62,270. So that leaves a shortage of $81,430, which represents 271 trees. So this issue of having a $15,000 cap is really costing the city overall a huge number of trees. And to illustrate, there were three matters before council this evening that had to do with this $15,000 cap. The total number of trees in the three different applications are 493. Of those, only 40 are being retained. What will actually be planted are 95 trees, so that the deficit will be, for these three applications, 707 trees. And at $300 a tree, that sums to $223,800. However, because of this provision in the tree by law, all it is going to be paid is The deficit, if you will, or the shortage, is $107,523. That represents 361 trees, which is an incredible addition to the city's tree canopy coverage. And I draw this to your attention because I think it's a critical one. The more dense we get and all the rest of it, the more important the whole issue of tree replacement becomes. And this isn't good enough, and this will be something that we will continue to address. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. We're just going to have that lady in black first, and we'll have you next.
Thank you, councilors. My name's Elaine Brooker. I live at 1931 Laurent Drive. I just wanted to put this piece of information on the... This was brought to our attention last week from a real estate friend of ours. We were under the impression as well that the lot sizes would be, or the housing sizes would be around 3,000 square feet, and clearly, they're not 3,000 square feet. So this is, you know, to the point that the whole process along the way, we understand that there's going to be development, and that's wonderful, and it's fine, and it needs to be done. But the communication has been really poor, and the community, certain aspects of the community, certain, you know, we don't like to ask against them, because I think as a whole, what we really want is the children to be safe. I live right on the corner of one of those cul-de-sacs where all the people turn around. So as people have mentioned, it's half an hour in the morning, half an hour at night, and everything is fine, and the children are safe so far. So to put that through, I have a teenage son, too, that if that road goes through, I can guarantee you, he's going to be one of those ones that are whipping up and down that road. So it's not advantageous to put the road through for the safety of our community. And I just have one other question for the planner. Does the basement suite, although as developers said, there wouldn't be basement suites in there, but if there is basement suites, does the RAF or that the FAR number include the basement suite size? Because if so, then would that not push the...
Single-family, single-family homes are allowed basement suite, or allowed suites, but this particular Laurent Woods is not going to have suites, apparently, and we can make sure of that as we go through with restrictive covenants. But to answer your question, and Mr. Planner, correct me if I'm wrong, the size of the house would include, where you would have any kind of suite, would be included within the size of the house under the current FAR?
That is correct, Madam Mayor.
So no, they wouldn't be adding other space for a suite. It would be within the existing dwelling size.
Okay, thank you. And just one last point. If you could put the map up, please, that had the, that had the, you could see actually the, no, the other, well, that one does it, too. Originally, there was talk of the road that was supposed to be going straight through to Laurent, like to 20th. But if the city actually wanted that to happen at the time, they wouldn't have let those other two houses on the west side of Laurent be built, because originally, that road would have gone straight up. So I think in 2000, whenever the development was, the city acknowledged that that road doesn't act, the Laurent Road doesn't need to go through, because those properties have been built on what would have been the through road. So, you know, to the gentleman's point before, it was always the intention. I think that intention went by the wayside when those houses were put through, were put up there. So I would hopefully appeal to you that you don't put the road through to 20th, the Laurent Road. Thank you.
Okay, well, just let me get some clarification from the engineer or the planner on that. Is the, that is an existing half-road at the present time?
It was a walkway.
It's a walkway. Okay. All right. So it's been, it's been in existence as a walkway, but has it ever, is it on the books as proposed ultimate road?
Madam Mayor, when the lots on the west side of Laurent Drive was created...
Yes, the delegation is speaking, too.
The intention was always to construct Laurent Drive and connect that to 20th Avenue when the subject property develops. And that statutory right-of-way that allows for the walkway to be constructed can then be removed and sidewalk constructed along the west side of Laurent Drive.
Okay, so just for clarification. Thank you.
Thank you.
And we have more speakers? Yes, sir. Yep, it's your turn.
Hi, my name is Tony Fenrich, and I live at 1969 Amble Green Drive. I'm on the east side of the property. And I think you just confirmed one thing, and I was wondering about the covenant that we're talking about, is would you guys initiate it in your next, when you go to deliberation on this issue, or would he be suggesting it? When you do the...
I'm sorry, I don't, I guess... Oh, restrictive covenant. When we deliberate this evening, or at another time, it would be up to, it would be at our discretion to insist on various measures if the application proceeds.
And as Mr. Rowan was indicating, I'm also in support of covenant on the east side, so let no sheds or RVs or anything like that could be parked there. It's similar, I think the developer said he would be in...
He acknowledged that he was prepared to do that.
Yeah, sorry, I'm a little confused. I've just been driving it seven hours to get here, so I'm sorry. I've lived in this area, I just want to say, I've lived in this area since, for 33 years. I have raised four kids here. They've all gone to Laurent. They played in this great forest area in the bath, but now it seems to be going, which is, we always knew it would. But I'm thinking that that enhanced area, as some people are saying, there's a lot of wildlife in that area. And I'm thinking that we should probably be developing, or redoing that whole area and deciding like the home, where the home should be, so that that enhanced area could be a little bit wider, to allow for some of the owls and the woodpeckers and the coyotes to go through. And one of my proposals to Mrs. Ho, I think it was I talked to, was to put, because on the north side of 20th Avenue, there is a walkway that goes all the way to Dogwood Park. And I had suggested that we put a green belt in and bring it all the way down the east side and then along the south side, and bring it all the way onto Laurent Drive. But I don't think, I didn't go anywhere, and I'm not sure why. If there is some issues with green belts, because we've got it on the north side, we've got it all over the place in the, around the Dogwood Park area. Is there some bylaw that says, or some reason that we're not putting green belts in anymore?
No, I'll ask the planner as that, relative to green belt connection.
Madam Mayor, staff noted that the subject property did not have a BCS corridor, BCS standing for biodiversity conservation strategy corridor for wildlife. They also placing green belt behind homes is done in consultation with the Parks Department if such a BCS corridor does exist, and if it's wide enough. In this case, it was deemed not to be necessary.
Our Parks Department doesn't think it's wide enough.
Well, I've known the Laurent's for a long time, and I don't even know if they would want to put their name on Laurent Wood. First of all, there is no wood there anymore, and I'm not sure where the name came from, but anyway, that's just my feeling on it. Thank you for listening to me, and I think that...
Thank you.
Being, Surrey being the city of parks, maybe we should consider saving a few more trees.
Thank you very much for your comments. Do I have anyone else wishing to speak to this bylaw? First call, second call, and this is the final call. Thank you. Madam Clerk, next bylaw.
Zoning text amendment, bylaw number 18487, and the purpose is to amend Surrey zoning bylaw 12,000 in order to support the development of authorized truck parking facilities in industrial zones where the transportation industry is a permitted use.
I have no one signed up to speak to bylaw number eight. Is there anyone wishing to speak to this bylaw? First call, second call, third and final call. That concludes the public hearing portion of this evening. And council, I'm going to just ask if you could take a five-minute break?
Sure.
Adjourn for five minutes. And then go home. Okay. Okay, maybe we're. I'll call the, uh, regular council public hearing meeting back to order and we'll deal with committee reports. All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Movements be received for investment intervention committee, February 12th.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
I'll move the minutes be received to the cultural development advisory committee. Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
And I'll move the recommendations on fees to be adopted. Second.
All those in favor, opposed, and that's carried.
Move the minutes of environmental sustainability advisory committee of March 30th, 2016 minutes to be received.
All those in favor, opposed, and that's carried.
And move the recommendations to be adopted.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move minutes be received, internal audit committee, April 25th.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move minutes be received, audit committee, April 15th.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Move the minutes from the 16th of March for the Surrey Heritage Advisory Commission.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried. I have several proclamations, given the hour, I'll only read the, uh, title and the days. The emergency preparedness week, uh, May 1 through 7, whereas the city of Surrey recognizes the importance of emergency management, be it resolved that I, Linda Hepner, do hereby declare May 1 through 7 as emergency preparedness week. Elizabeth Frye Week, now therefore be it resolved that I, Linda Hepner, do hereby declare the week of May 1 through 7 as Elizabeth Frye Week in the city of Surrey. Surrey World Labyrinth Day, May 7, now therefore be it resolved that I, Linda Hepner, do hereby declare May 7 as Surrey World Labyrinth Day in the city of Surrey. Choo Choo Day? Now, yeah, now therefore be it resolved that I, Linda Hepner, do hereby declare May 8, 2016, as Choo Gee Day in the city of Surrey. Neighborhood House Week, now therefore be it resolved that I, Linda Hepner, do hereby declare May 8 through 14 as Neighborhood House Week in the city of Surrey. Chronic Fatigue Syndrome and Fibromyalgia International Awareness Day, now therefore be it resolved that I, Linda Hepner, do hereby declare May 12, 2016, as Chronic Fatigue Syndrome and Fibromyalgia International Awareness Day in the city of Surrey. Public Works Week, May 15 through 21, now therefore be it resolved that I, Linda Hepner, do hereby declare May 15 through 21 as Public Works Week in the city of Surrey. Cycling for Diversity Week, May 22 through 28, now therefore be it resolved that I, Linda Hepner, do hereby declare May 22 through 28 as Cycling for Diversity Week in the city of Surrey. Moving on to corporate reports.
Move corporate report R091, amendments to water shortage response.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Corporate report R092, amendments to Surrey train whistle cessation, cessation, sorry.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Corporate report R093, word of contract for Artillery and Collector road paving in the amount of $2,354,361.22.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Corporate report R094, word of contract for minor road paving for in the amount of
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Corporate report R095, word of contract for miscellaneous roadwork packages, $1,931,114.22.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Corporate report R096, parking update, proposed amendments to Surrey's bylaw.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
Corporate report R097, the 2015 annual financial report.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried.
We've, uh, we've dealt with R098 earlier, so corporate report R099, supplemental funding requests for two items, Dusty Babes Artist Collective for $2,984 and item B is for Kent Street Coristers for $3,350.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, carried. And given the late hour, I would ask for motion to adjourn and reconvene next Monday to deal with the balance of the agenda.
Also move.
Second.
All those in favor, opposed, and we are adjourned. Thank you so much to staff for all of the work and to, to all of those who stayed so late this evening, but I think we'll be in a better position to contemplate next week.